Good evening. I called out order the virtual study session of the Lakewood City Council on November eighteenth at seven oh two P M. To connect with the council meeting online, you can use one of the following links either Lakewood speaks dot org or Lakewood dot org slash council videos. For online public comments, we do have those available also on Lakewood speaks. You may post comments of any links to Lakewood speaks dot org. An online forum for public comments that will be left on overnight and until tomorrow morning through ten A M. Tomorrow morning for any comments. That are related to, um, we have two topics, um, with tonight's presentations. I will with that go ahead and hand it over to our assistant city clerk, Ms. Fiore. If you could start us off by calling the roll.
Strom.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Labir.
Here.
Low.
Here.
Mayor Guerrero.
Here.
Nystrom.
Here.
Oliver.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Sure as I.
Here.
Thanks.
Here.
And Stuart is absent. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you so much. So we'll open up the conversation for tonight's first topic. That's on our extreme weather sheltering and. Council has asked for staff to give us an update on the work that's being done in this place. And with that, this evening, we have. Chris Connor here, who is the manager of our housing and thriving communities, and he will be giving us a presentation on our cities. The the status, um, of the city's extreme weather sheltering program. For those of you that have watched, uh, for a while, you'll know that this is, um, ongoing and newish kind of work for our city. So we're very excited to hear. Uh, a little bit more about where things are, especially as we're heading into the twenty twenty five planning season. To understand where things are, maybe where things have been and and give us a little bit of an idea as we're trying to move forward on what kind of ideas. Um, what things we might like to be looking at as we look ahead. So with that, Mr. Connor, I'll go ahead and hand you the floor and we'll give it to you to take it over.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Strom, and thank you, Council, for, uh, having me tonight. It is, um. Incidentally, it's the very beginning and of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, so it's a appropriate time to to be giving this type of presentation to you all. Um, I'm going to go ahead, share my screen and get us underway. So, uh, a little bit, uh, about how I organized this presentation. I I made this slide around these four themes. They'll continue to resonate, uh, throughout the presentation, but really I took a kind of a who, what, when, where, why, how kind of approach to to organizing things. So. Um, we'll go ahead and what you'll learn about tonight is a little bit about, um. Our division, Housing and Thriving Communities, a little bit about the context in which we do this work this season, this time of year. About where we do the work, the the city's navigation center, and about a little bit about how the program functions. So it's a a programmatic based. Uh, presentation to give you an idea on the steps that we take to activate and stand on our program. So a little bit about housing thriving communities. This is my first opportunity to really publicly introduce, uh, the division. So we're a division within the Department of Sustainability. And community development that's, uh, delivering the second presentation tonight as well. Uh, the division was created after the establishment of Lakewood's very first strategic housing plan in February of twenty twenty four. Uh, the work that we talked about tonight bears upon elements of that plan as well. And we really operate in three categories. We implement the strategies within that plan. Uh, we implement initiatives in the neighbor. Neighborhood support team functions. So this is, uh, uh, your neighborhood participation program, neighborhood get togethers and the like. And then we administer the city investments in homelessness response, housing and community business programs. So that's just a little bit about where we're coming from because we're new, wanted to make sure we got that introduction in. But starting off severe shelter, why, uh, do we do this work? So there isn't really a lot, surprisingly, um, there's not a lot of peer reviewed research on on the correlations between homelessness. And cold weather, um, injury or or cold cold weather morbidity, but two recent, uh, studies kind of do stand out. One from Toronto and one that proceeded it based in New York City. The the kind of upshot or the the highlight of these these two studies really is that indicates that risks come. And are relevant even when temperatures are not sub zero. So we we tend to make people present in mind and homelessness. When we're seeing those temperatures go down into the single digits, go down below zero. But really, it it doesn't take much for injury to meet people who are enduring life outdoors. So. In Toronto, the odds of experiencing hypothermic injury or death increased more than one and a half times. For every nine degrees, it dropped from thirty two degrees Fahrenheit. Um, these aren't round numbers because I did it. I I had, I put a lot of effort into this slide. Because I it came from Canada, so I had to move a lot of Celsius to Fahrenheit. So, um, that's why it's not around ten degrees drop, but every nine degrees it goes. Uh, down from thirty two degrees, one and a half times more likely, uh, to suffer a hypothermic injury or death in Toronto. Uh, with precipitation, it's even less. So if you have a millimeter of precipitation out there, your risk for hypothermia increases more than one fold. Uh, one point one fold for every millimeter of precipitation. So if you're getting wet and it's cold, uh, the risks increase. So seventy two percent of the events in Toronto that met, uh, emergencies rooms or people succumbed, uh, to the cold. Were actually when lows were warmer than five degrees. So again, it's not when we're necessarily seeing those minus ten degree, um, temperatures that factor in. Uh, but it's often often above that zero mark and, uh, even more. And additionally, a lot of the, a lot of the, uh, incidents that present to the emergency departments. Even though they're smaller in percentage of the total incident, we can move over to the New York City side of this. Their emergency department, uh, one percent of visits for hypothermia are among people in homelessness. But still, that goes to twenty four percent of them are of their hospitalizations for hypothermia are of people experiencing homelessness. So what this tells us is other folks, those ninety nine percent who may present for emergency room visits for hypothermia. Aren't necessarily moving into the hospital for longer stays and the expenses that are incurred with those longer stays, but they're maybe treated in the the E R. And then sent home while as people in homelessness are not. Additionally, uh, even with that slim, um, number of emergency department visits, uh, eighteen percent of deaths in hypothermia in New York City. Were among people experiencing homelessness. So those are national studies and national insights. We don't have studies per se that are localized data, but we can parse out. Um, information, data based on on homeless emergency room visit visits combined with visits that are related to hypothermia. And homelessness and then data on hypothermic morbidity of Jefferson County residents regarding regardless of housing. Housing status. So I'll walk us through a a little bit of that here. So the main thing, this, this is a chart that, uh, looks at, um, monthly homeless related emergency department and urgent care. Visits among Jefferson County residents. So this isn't necessarily people who visited a hospital in Jefferson County. They may live in Jefferson County, report that they're residents of Jefferson County and have, uh, have accessed emergency care, uh, somewhere else for hypothermia. So this is a significant kind of nuance, uh, one that we can't fully tease out in a data informed way. But this, for instance, might include scenarios that somebody went and went winter camping or went for a ski weekend or something. And we're in elevation and such and experienced hypothermia there. Then they go to the health system in Summit County. But reporting that they're, uh, from Lakewood, from Golden or from a municipality, they would still show up in this data. Still, some things that we can pull out of this chart is, uh, is the increase, the general increase on, um. Homelessness related emergency department or urgent care visits. So I I guess I might be a little bit ahead of myself on the skiing example. We don't have many people in homelessness who are going up to the county, up to Summit County to ski. But note, uh, on this chart, if you were to split this chart in that middle, so if you were to look at January of twenty twenty two. Here and draw a line up here. So no month in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty or twenty twenty one. Did a hundred people in homelessness or more, uh, present to the emergency room or urgent care. Visits in Jefferson County. If you look at that climb since, uh, January of twenty twenty two. To the most recent data in September twenty twenty four, when I put this presentation together. There were more, there were twenty months of more than one hundred, uh, people in homelessness presenting to the emergency department. Or urgent care. The average number of monthly visits for for that period on that second half, more recent side of the chart. Was actually a hundred and twelve compared to sixty five from the left side of that chart that has the older data. So we're, we understand that more more people in homelessness are accessing emergency department or urgent care, um. In Jeffco. So what about those related to hypothermia, uh, those those visits to E D or urgent care? So. Twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two, I don't have as as far back data, uh, but they delivered an average of of one point six visits per month. To the emergency department or urgent care for hypothermia by people experiencing homelessness. So the total number in twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two of visits. Was thirty eight. Uh, between January of twenty twenty three and again, the most recent data. September of twenty twenty four, the monthly average grew to two people experiencing homelessness. Presenting to emergency department or urgent care for hypothermia. So that that number also climbs, um, with forty six total visits, uh, to emergency rooms. This is the, uh, final chart that I have of of local data. This is all thanks to Jeffco Public Health, by the way. Um, but this is one of the more striking ones to me. So again, this, this is referring to Jefferson County resident hypothermic deaths. So. Uh, this isn't necessarily where, uh, people, um, succumbs to hypothermia or a a cause of hypothermia in their debt. But if that they were Jeffco residents between nineteen ninety nine and twenty twenty three. So this data goes back pretty far. Um. The last five years, uh, have presented the highest number of hypothermic related deaths to Jefferson County residents for that entire period. So if we look over the twenty years between nineteen ninety nine and going up to, uh, twenty eighteen. Jefferson County averaged two hypothermic related deaths each year. But in the last five years of tracking in Jefferson County, the average has been seven point four. So we have more Jefferson County residents. Who are passing away due to hypothermic, uh, uh, causes or hypothermic related, uh, uh, causes in the last five years. Uh, than anytime in the twenty years preceding that. Um, all of this, you know, is it's a little bit speculative to kind of think about in terms of homelessness, but at the same time. Uh, in the field of common sense, we know that people who are staying outdoors, um, are at higher risk and higher threat to to the elements. Now contrary to this, a little bit is when the Jefferson County coroner looked in the last year's data, they did not identify any deaths from weather related. Or hypothermic causes among people who are experiencing homelessness. So there's a couple of things that are going on here. One, that earlier chart. Uh, that's where that factor of, um, of it measuring the deaths of people who reported residency in Jefferson County, but not necessarily. Uh, the location of their debt. Uh, the the coroner only look, only investigates and looks at deaths that are geographically occurring. Within Jefferson County. So that's one way to look at it. Another way to look at it is in twenty twenty three, uh, we were, we were activating. We were providing a lifesaving shelter, uh, through Bayard, through Recovery Works, through our homeless navigators. And helping people, uh, navigate their way to care. So this work may matter in in that sense as well. So moving on, uh, that's a little bit about why we do this. It's a, it's a lifesaving effort to bring people indoors, uh, but want to move on from the why. Uh, which we always start with the why to the where. Lakewood's Navigation Center. So the Navigation Center comprises this, uh, lawn building with the dark roof as well as this, uh. A smaller square that, um, is a net tan roof, so it makes that opposite L shape. Uh, it does not include this white roof section. Uh, the building is contiguous. You can navigate through both. Uh, on the inside, they're not separate buildings, uh, by entrance or anything. They have a common entrance. Uh, the building is located at eight thousand West Colfax and we purchased it just a couple of months ago. It came into possession of of City of Lakewood in September of twenty twenty four in partnership with grant, uh, funding from Colorado Department of Local Affairs. That said, um, prior to our owning of it, it was leased and operated by Recovery Works. As a navigation center for residents experiencing homelessness, uh, since October of twenty twenty three. So Recovery Works is now the City of Lakewood's tenant. Uh, prior to that transfer of ownership. Uh, they were still a tenant of the building and operating in the same capacity during the day, uh, to provide services to people experiencing homelessness. So part of that service was last cold weather season, the building also hosted severe weather sheltering. Um, it's going to be utilized. Uh, for that purpose again this year, um, but its long term vision, uh, will be to renovate and, uh. Redesign and renovate renovate a longer term use as a improved ongoing care center. Navigation center for people experiencing homelessness. A couple of things happened once that building came into our possession. Uh, most, uh, importantly is it allowed us access of the entirety of the building for severe weather sheltering. So last year, even though we mobilized the same address location, we were really limited in the space that we could use in that building because it also had. Um, housed a active business in the in the rear hall. Uh, this video is from, um. Last year, just to give a feel for the kind of operations that have been happening there, allow myself to take a drink, uh, swallow of tea here. I'm sorry, uh, it sounds like that went by. Um, I could hear the audio on my side, but it sounds like it didn't track to the presentation to you all. Uh, apologies for that, but hopefully you could walk through the the captions on that and and capture the the gist of the video. So this year, since we're able to utilize more of the space, more of the potential of the navigation center, we are able to increase the number. Of souls that we're going to be sleeping on, uh, severe weather activation nights. So last year, uh, we allowed ourselves to go up to fifty souls slept. Each night of activation and this year we're moving that up to seventy five. So it's a fifty percent increase, uh, beyond what we were, what we were doing last year. So. Getting to the rest on the who, what, when, where and how. Uh, not only are we increasing the, uh, number of people that will be sleeping overnight, but we're increasing the number of anticipated nights of activation as well. By adjusting the weather criteria upon which we would open the shelter. So the activation criteria falls into either of of the weather conditions of overnight low temperatures. Being thirty two degrees Fahrenheit or below with active and accumulating snowfall and precipitation. Typically, that's going to be read as meeting that one inch, uh, level of accumulation and it would be active, uh, precipitation, not just snow that may be. Residual on the ground from a previous snowfall. Uh, or if overnight low temperatures are forecast to be at twenty degrees or below, uh, we would release that, um, precipitation. Uh, requirement and that would be with or without accumulating snowfall or precipitation. We would, we would start an activation. Our activations are invoked through emergency declaration that allows us to navigate some of the challenges of facility. And to be a bit nimble about standing up shelter. So. Apologies, this is, uh. The source, the source of truth for weather forecasts is going to be the National Weather Services seventy two hour forecast for Lakewood. So what that comes up from is a this little green box. There's a weather station somewhere in there. It comprises of Belmar, the downtown areas. And that draws all the weather information upon which we we, uh, base our decision and is available at the link in the, um. Presentation there. It's seventy two hours because we need to give our providers, since this is not a night to night shelter, uh, the staffing patterns are 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 invoked alongside the weather activations. So we try to give our operating partners that seventy two hour period, uh, to get their staffing times in order. The National Weather Service has also developed a predictive tool that helps us, uh, kind of look at a map and anticipate what the weather conditions are going to be. Uh, across, uh, a seven day period. So this is a screenshot of one of those maps from the site. You can see the municipalities here. And a percentage factor in there. So this would be the potential for temperatures to go beneath thirty two degrees. The tool also allows you to do that at gradients of temperature. So we can produce another map that would show us the likelihood that. Uh, overnight low would be twenty degrees or under, and then that allows us to be informed as we go and we look at the seventy two hour forecast. In particular, um, the link to that is also available if you want to follow up. Where we go from there is we look at, uh, a hourly forecast from National Weather Service that will place the low temperatures. Uh, vis a vis the snowfall, anticipated snowfall, so that we can look at that information in one place. So what happens? So, uh, the next set of slides are kind of the the time marks that go through an activation all the way to stand down. So this is. T minus seventy two hours before an activation. So we've looked at the maps, we've looked at the weather, we know that in three days we're going to activate. There's four main components that we will, uh, invoke once we know that we're making that decision in three days. One, we're notifying those operating partners, uh, for that seventy two hour period so that they can start getting their staffing patterns in order. Uh, start making calls and assigning shifts and supplying up for sheltering. We send out our homeless navigators. I have two of them, right? So we send out homeless navigators with the priority. To connect with their known contacts on the street to make a plan for how they're going to access shelter. Or to, uh, track them to alternative shelter if, uh, if they need accommodating, um, service in that way. Um, and can't navigate the the congregate shelter too well. We coordinate with our operational partners in the region. So here in particular, we're talking about the the county. So we're getting our county partners in line to know that we're going to activate, uh, shelter on this date. Uh, so can you also arrive with alternative, uh, shelter means motel voucher and your outreach mess and messaging as well. Uh, so that we can accommodate everybody who comes to us. Um, and then we monitor the forecast for those stand down conditions. So. A a good example of this is we will be activating tomorrow night for the likely a one night period and we made that decision going into the weekend. Uh, and started, uh, these functions accordingly as as we were making that decision. So within one day or twelve hours, uh, before we're activated. We're still doing those, some of those functions beforehand. We're still deployed, we're still coordinating with our partners and we're still watching the weather. Um, to to anticipate a stand down or any change in the weather. Important in this factor, in this space for you all is that our public pushes and our public notifications tend to go out in this. Twenty four to twelve hour action period. There's times when we'll move those further up the clock and notify earlier if we're going into a weekend or such. Uh, but but important to know that we, we need to know that our staffing is unlocked. We need to know that things are coordinated. So we're not. Aside from our homeless navigators, we're not doing, uh, external messaging or external pushes until we absolutely know that typically within a twenty four hour period. So the primary, original, accurate and updated public information that leads that public push of of information. Is always through Lakewood Communications at Lakewood dot org slash shelter. So that's going to be the first and the authoritative. Uh, notification that goes out externally that we are activated in the next day or or, um. Sometimes longer if we can get that information out. It's really imperative, um, that we follow the lead of Lakewood communications and all public communications on activation. Aside from the homeless navigators that are meeting people one on one, uh, follow that posting and, uh, follow Lakewood communications lead. The reason for that is the information can get really sticky and mistranslated sometimes. And so if we're working within a seventy two hour period. Me telling somebody that the shelter is going to open in three days can oftentimes by the time it meets somebody in need on the street. Uh, sound as the shelter is opening tonight, right? And then we're sending somebody to a closed door. Um, and we want to kind of, we want to kind of condense that information period and that push notification period. To be on the daily so that that people, when they're hearing the shelter is opening tonight, means that the shelter is opening. So upon posting by Lakewood, you know, uh, once we see on that, uh, site, the the banner at the top says that we are opening on that date. Then it's free for all and it's like certainly be out there, uh, engaging your networks and gazing, engaging your contact list to let people know. Um, that that the shelter will be open. We want people to come inside. So now we got an alarm clock, zero hour action. Uh, so. So again, we're not stopping on deploying, coordinating and monitoring actions, uh, throughout the course of the event, even as we're activated. Uh, this is when county motel vouchers coordinate to the program, program. We get a lot of questions about motel vouchers and alternate shelter. Um, what I'll say about motel vouchers is motel vouchers and the transportation to motel. We coordinate at random and without preference as we're managing potential overflow needs. But we're also coordinating with intention and discretion to accommodate guests with access or functional needs. So there's kind of these. Two truths that we got to hold in mind as we're managing how we, how we distribute motel vouchers. Like if we see somebody. Who's coming up in in wheelchair or mobility, has mobility needs and access needs. We definitely want to be able to accommodate them in the best way possible. That may be with a motel voucher. But if we're reaching that capacity where a seventy five, uh, person demand is turning into a hundred person demand. Uh, those allocations for motel vouchers are going to be distributed at random and without preference. So that might be that we're. Vouchering people who are at the front of the line rather than at the end of the line because we don't want folks thinking that if they show up late. They have a better chance of the shelter being full and taken to to motel. We have to manage for some of those realities to do this in the most equitable way. So as we're activated to stand down, we're continuing to monitor through the course of the activation, looking for that day when. When the temperature is a bit nicer to be able to stand down. Uh, the county motel and alternative shelter resources will remain coordinated through activation. Uh, we've already led a five day period of activation, uh, in which they were coordinated through it. Uh, our operating partner will report their nightly census of people by ten AM. So I don't get the information on how many people stayed the night prior until mid, mid morning of the next day. Uh, we update that information to our division, to Lakewood Communications upon request and to our operating partners at Jefferson County. And then we kind of coordinate our assessment for how long is this going to go? So uh, the city staff and the program staff running it. Uh, at a one night, a three night and five night intervals are going to be conferencing on, on how things are going. And how the, how the trajectory of the weather pattern looks and, and anticipating stand down. It's my experience, once we get into that five night period of an ongoing consecutive night activation. That's when we have to start worrying about, you know, the sustainability of the duration of the event. You know, it's, it's we get into overtime or into callouts of staff. We get into uh, just fatigue of, of operating that program on the fly. Um, but it's rare, it's rare. I say it's rare, um, even though we did a five night activation a couple of weeks ago. Uh, but we'll continue to assess and be in conversation with the program. And then stand down actions, schedule is conveyed as soon as we know. As soon as we know, we're going to pull the shelter out line. We want people aware so that they can make a plan for that day. Uh, it's no later than twelve hours prior to a closure. Uh, our, our deploy and our coordinating activities wrap up. So our navigators are, are back uh, removed from that prioritization of helping people navigate their, their way to shelter. A closure is always going to occur on the morning following the last night of an operation. We're never going to, that's, we're never going to go in and say, oh, you know, it's, it's warm, but it's three in the morning, right? We're still going to, to run that night all the way through until the morning release. Uh, operating partners then restore the facility and the city. We return to that just normal monitoring for the next weather pattern that might arise. So last section here, I'm probably going on a little bit long. I want to give you a picture of what the shelter environment and kind of kit looks like. I describe it as kit for severe weather shelter because we're not working with durable goods here. So this extreme or severe weather sheltering is, is designed to be modular. Something that you can back into, open space, stand up and take down, right? So there's no permanent bed or permanent fixture that, that we're talking about here. It's all mobilized supply. So what, what kit involves for activation is a poly mattress with an integrated pillow. Um, and, and all transparency, we don't have those yet because um, FEMA was so active around the hurricanes that, that suppliers couldn't get uh, the order delivered on time for us. We're anticipating those at the end of the month. And right now we rush ordered um, rollout camp uh, pads uh, for that five day activation. That's what we'll be using tomorrow, uh, but they should be arriving soon, the three inch mattresses. People also get polar fleece blankets. Uh, we have the area equipped with three accessibility or functional need cots that are raised from, from the ground. Where you can tilt the back, tilt the, the feet up if needed, in case we're in the situation where we cannot accommodate somebody otherwise and they need to be accommodated on site. Additionally, we are using portalet toilets and hand washing stations like you would see at festivals. Uh, we've only owned this building for two months and it is not equipped or designed for the assembly use. So we do need to use modular kind of uh, plumbing supplies uh, to, to get through this type of programming in the space. So the shelter environment, it'll be maintained in a clean, clean order. Uh, that our operators are charged to uh, clean it on the daily and then also return it um, uh, to condition, uh, better condition in, once they leave an activation. Uh, guests are permitted access to an outdoor smoking area. We have two meals that uh, people will have access to through the course of the program. An evening meal is provided at night and morning meals provided uh, with continuity to Recovery Works Day Programming during the work week. And incorporated into the severe weather sheltering uh, on weekends when Recovery Works isn't open. The sleeping area has five points, five emergency exits and at least the, the majority of those, once you go out, the door locks behind you. But at least one of those is, is going to remain accessible for reentry and exit uh, for smo- smokers, uh, for restroom use, animal relief areas, those type, type of things. Our staff ratio is one to twenty. Uh, this is a minimum of four staff for the seventy five person bike capacity. It's important to note though that uh, we say the program has seventy five person sleeping capacity. But we're also, and a whole other element of this program is navigating uh, folks to alternative shelter as well. So um, a couple of weeks ago, our crest for this season so far was a hundred and twenty six individuals who were served through the program. Uh, sixty eight of those individuals slept in the shelter and we always try to keep some of those beds free for when people come in at three in the morning. Uh, but, but about uh, higher than forty percent of those folks were actually moved to alternative shelter through this, this program. So that's a very significant part of this that, that shouldn't go understated. It's not only that we're sleeping people at the navigation center, but we're helping them find indoor places to be uh, when we reach our limit as well. So, and then I, I'd like to give you more information about the community based organization that we're going to have doing this. Unfortunately, we are still in active procurement for severe weather shelter operations right now. Uh, Bayon Enterprises has been carrying uh, the programmatic responsibility uh, until we reach that point. Um, and then in conclusion, you know, I always, conclusion is the same points. Homelessness is a solvable problem and housing with services is a solution to homelessness. Uh, but I will wrap up the presentation there and uh, open the conversation.
Thank you so much for that and for all the work that you guys have done. Before I hand it over to council for questions, I just a massive thank you for the regularity. The, the, the communication that has come out of probably, I would say your office, Mr. Connor, but it's probably literally your computer that you're doing it. You know, this, this is a new thing for the, the city of Lakewood to really be going deeper on trying to address some of these issues. And um, it's not been an easy process. There've been a lot of growing pains, a lot along with that. A lot of um, trying to, you know, get better at things and realizing where things need to be getting better. And I'll tell you, you have done an amazing job with regards to clarifying the communication of what is out there. This year, it's been really refreshing every time I get that email from you that this is open. We're like, okay, good, we've got the info we need. We've got it early enough that we can dispel it out to the community members that need it. So I just want to say a huge thank you to all the effort that you've done putting together all that info and making sure that it goes out to everybody, including your city councillors as early as possible.
Thank you, Mayor. It means a lot to me that uh, once you receive that, you're, you're sharing that too. I do not have a, I do not have a uh, voice that can project that far into the community yet. So that's for uh, leveraging your networks as well.
Um, Councilor Mia Guerrero.
Want to echo our mayor, um, and just a huge, huge amount of thanks uh, for how the program is already working this year. Um, and also on that just really thorough presentation. I think having sort of every single aspect of how this works and a little bit of the, the nuances in there, getting a little more granular and how all the things put together. Um, is tremendously helpful and I think will help us as a body sort of like understand how to better support that space. But I think also we'll be able to answer a lot of the, the more detail oriented questions that we get from community. And um, I'm, I'm very, very excited about our, our capacity in this program. And I'm really thrilled that we are leading the county on this response. Uh, I do have a couple of questions. Um, one of my first questions is, is do you feel that uh, that you have like sufficient outreach? Right, you were talking about going out with police and homeless navigators and then we, you know, we share things. I saw that the county had pushed out things that they're heading home network. Um, but do you have enough folks? Do you have enough homeless navigators for that kind of outreach? Do you, do you have enough homeless navigators? Do, do we have enough homeless navigators for other things as well? I think is my, is my second question there, but particularly for, for this. Like do we, how, how successful do we think we are at getting out the word? And like, i- yeah, is there sufficient capacity being left there?
Yeah, sure. I've, I've, I've been thinking about that and trying to be a little bit, you know, as data informed as I can on, on how I'm thinking about that. Um, you, you can always, you can always add another outreach worker. I think there's some components that you have to make sure that you're growing kind of symbiotically with that outreach, right? And there's, you want to make sure that as you're growing an outreach program, you're resourcing that outreach worker. So as not to dilute um, what's already out there, right? You want, you want your outreach workers in the field to be well equipped to meet, meet people's needs. I think the, a, a big helpful piece has just been having a navigation center in place, right? Um, it's, it's Lakewood's first facility based component of a homelessness response, right? I mean, uh, I think it's given the, the two person homeless navigator team that I have. Um, um, a really, a really good kind of foothold on where they can tell people to go, right? In terms of like, are we getting the message out? I did, I did, you know, go through that um, initial five day uh, activation period. I looked at where we crested in terms of the number of, of guests that we were bringing in. And that number was one twenty six, right? And they're, they're largely, they're, they're single adults, right? They're, they're not our families experiencing homelessness. They're not uh, necessarily unaccompanied youth or anything, they're single adults. So um, I, I did want to look and I looked at the point num- in time numbers to kind of cross reference like, well. How many single adults in unsheltered homelessness do we have uh, in, in Jefferson County? So this is in Lakewood and, but it's in Jefferson County. So the total point in time count from last year, when we go out once a year, we try to identify as many people experiencing homelessness. That total was nine hundred and twenty five. But if you start slicing that down to only get a number of single adults who are unsheltered. That number goes down to five hundred and fourteen. So we got a hundred and twenty five of those folks were somehow outreach or in reach, they knew about the program. They came forward and presented to receive care. So I'm, I'm thinking we're about twenty, twenty five percent there, twenty five percent of, of uh, of, of that unsheltered um, single adult homelessness count. Were gravitating to the service. So I think we're doing pretty good getting that word out for the very first week that we were operating. Um, in terms of that weather being a push factor, but also people knowing where to, where to go.
Well, thank you. Um, thank you so much for all that information, glad to hear. Um, and you said one twenty six was the tap out rate? That was the highest number?
That was the crest. So sixty eight of those individuals did sleep at the navigation center. The rest uh, by county resources were navigated to uh, indoors. And that was the night of the big weather push where the snow was stopping streets and what like.
So my other question I think is, is more on that. I know you talked a little bit about uh, transportation, but I, I think in our last presentation, uh, a year ago-ish, we talked about. This need for transportation and also for like other locations, right? One of the, one of the wonderful things about the shelter is where it is, is, is relatively accessible via transit. It is near where a lot of folks reside um, who are unsheltered. But making sure that people like families who show up there or minors are able to get those vouchers and get to places and get back from places. And like vice versa, that folks in Jefferson County are, are able to find and get to um, the shelter. I know has been something that it has been difficult in terms of both like funding, but also like figuring out the best, most effective ways to do that. Obviously, the long term hope is that we have other places with beds open um, in the county, just to say that out loud. Um, but I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit more about how that went? Um, and then I will uh, lea- leave my other questions and see, uh, see if we get, get to them via other councillors.
Yeah, no, and I'll, 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 I'll say that again and echo that again too, is that we do need um, other locations and other beds throughout the, throughout the county, really. Um, the idea of transporting people to eight thousand West Polfax countywide uh, may not be sustainable. Like if we were operating this program on the nightly, and eventually we do want to get there, right? Where we, we, we aren't doing severe weather uh, activations anymore. But we have a, a reliable shelter that's open every single night, right? But even if we were there and we were operating a shelter at capacity of seventy five nightly. And then we had another forty six percent of demand coming and needing to navigate somewhere through uh, eight thousand West Polfax every night. That, that probably wouldn't be a tenable situation, right? So we need, we need ways that people can navigate to other navigation centers that are distributed through the county. In terms of transportation right now, uh, we relied on, on Bayard's driver and van to assist people to motel. And then with a return trip of county provided uh, bus fare to get back, right? So I mean, it, we, we wrapped up transportation when we put out our request for proposals for the, for this year's operator of extreme weather sheltering. Severe weather sheltering, it's a component of that, you know? So it, it's kind of coming in with the package and the expectation of whoever we bring in to run this is also going to have the idea for, for how they're coordinating um, the county resources. And how they're giving people to those alternatives once we reach capacity at the nav center.
Counselor Stinks.
Thank you. Yes, and thanks for the presentation, Chris, really appreciate it. Um, it was very astute of us to say, hey, remodeling is not going to start during the winter. We need this as a cold weather shelter. And the, and uh, yet um, as we move through the winter, I wonder if there's been a date set for when remodeling will start? Will it be March, April, May, any, anything set yet?
So while we're in operation for severe weather, we are doing pieces of the longer term project. So we can't go in there and swing a hammer and knock down walls and make a construction site where we're also sleeping people. Things that we can do is bringing in our design architect and thinking about uh, permitting processes and what's needed to ready ourselves. Once, once the end of the cold weather season uh, is upon us at the end of April. Um, to be able to go in on May first and, and have all things move out so that, that construction um, partner can come in. The builders can come in and start doing that hammer swinging, right? To, to revision that space. Um, our hope, our ambitious hope is that we get to uh, the cold weather activation season of twenty twenty five. And we can ribbon cut this, this building, this address as a fully functioning twenty four seven navigation center, right? Um, that's, that's the hope and, and vision and that, that removes us out of this kind of structure of the response. Where we're only activating when we're looking at temperature thresholds or anything. And we're just consistently uh, operating a shelter program for X number of beds in the night to night um, capacity.
Great, thanks. Yeah, you anticipated my other question on having it finished by twenty twenty five cold weather season. So yeah, thank you so much for your, your um, great planning in um, getting ready for permits when you can swing hammers, et cetera. So appreciate your work, thank you.
I, I, I do want to say that that is a breakneck schedule. Um, all green lights, all things moving as, as fast as they can. But that's what we're, that's, that's our goal, that's our stake in the ground, so.
Thanks.
Counselor Cruz.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Connor. Just wanted to echo my colleagues' gratitude for um, yeah, the amount of like care put into this presentation and the information you're sharing with us. As well as all of the work you and your team and all of our partners um, are putting in to make this possible. I mean, I think that the, the data at least that we have so far speak for themselves and like the kind of impact that this can have. Um, and I look forward to learning more about that as we have more data and more access to it. And so I appreciate your data driven approach. Um, and yeah, and just wanted to echo some of the feedback on Lakewood speaks and my own thoughts that the expanded capacity with the greater amount of space is also great to hear. And also it seems right, like we have greater demand, even at just our liquid site than that capacity has. That thankfully, it seems like the. That thankfully, it seems like the voucher program is covering. So that's awesome. Um, so I have just like a cup, like some larger picture questions, but I'm just like very. Just curious questions about the operations. Um, so like what happens? When there's like the turnover from like the night to the day services, um, for Bayard? Or for between Bayard now, whomever is going to be there later to recovery works?
So currently in the mornings, um, it's, it's not lockstep. Where there's, there is about a forty-minute to an hour period when people are released from, um. Uh, the overnight sheltering component so that they can kind of clean that area. And people tend to stage for opening of recovery works. Uh, I, I, I feel comfortable saying that. Through our solicitation process right now, uh, we're seeing some creative ideas about how do we, how do we wed those two together? So that there, there isn't a gap in that service and people can just move directly from, um, the night of shelter. And walk through the door to, to the day program. Uh, it does mention the, um, the, the day services at recovery works. They tend to wrap up at around. Two P M, five days a week. And then there's a gap there as well. That's, that's a bit longer. Where, uh, people, um, wait for the shelter to open at seven P M, right? Um, so, so there, there is space in the day between, between the, uh. Closure of day services and the opening of an activation at night as well.
Thank you. Yeah, no, that's helpful to kind of understand and excited that maybe there will be some improvements with that with a new. Uh, with whatever provider kind of ends up coming through the procurement process. Um. I also was just curious kind of like what the meal has looked like and also like what that's going to look like based on the procurement process.
Yeah, um, it's, uh, it's, uh, I spent, I was. I was at the shelter several times for that five-day period. Um, I didn't, I didn't. Sit down for a meal with folks, uh, because I was a bit busy at that time. But what I saw was for the evening meal was, was good. You know, I have an eye on for that too. Um, so I saw brisket sandwiches the first night from a restaurant vendor, um, and then other things. Moving on through the, the week as, as well. So, uh, the morning meals, sometimes it has been grab and go. It's grab and go typically when, um, the day services at recovery works are going to provide a, a hot breakfast upon opening. Uh, in the morning. So that morning meal for the activated severe weather portion. Isn't, isn't as substantial because the presumption is that people would prefer to get a hot meal anyway, once they're, once they're in recovery works. Uh, Recovery Works is not open on the weekends, so they're not providing that breakfast meal on the weekends. And then that's when the severe weather, uh, program would, would kind of amp up their, their morning offerings for a breakfast meal.
Yeah, so that's awesome to hear. Um, and you know, I'll just ask one more of my questions and then I'll defer and get in the back of the line for our timing. Um, so I think maybe just another logistical question. I'm curious, I mean, I think. Maybe a statement as well, like I'm really grateful for the expansion of the temperature. Um, threshold, I mean, within kind of what had already been set up and I'm glad that we're holding to that. And I think that's really helpful. I know we're the only. People in the county doing that. Um, and, um, and the county, I think, Ray is having their plan to activate at zero degrees. Um, and so I'm curious like what coordination would look like for that in a kind of a very extreme case.
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. I, I think, you know, one of the blessings of the five-day activation, you know, you. Tend to want like a slower rollout to kind of get your toe in the water, but we were kind of thrown into it, right? We had five days of, of activated shelter. And the last day of that was a snowstorm that was coming in that was anticipated to close. Our interstates and close our highways and such. And so that. It allowed me to kind of see kind of like, okay, when we have a severe winter weather storm push factor. Like you do get more people the worse, worse the weather gets, right? So I'm not anticipating. Uh, tomorrow night on Tuesday, the low is going to be twenty degrees, but very little precipitation. We're still going to open. It's not going to be that one hundred and twenty-six person crest. Uh, or if it is, it's not necessarily a weather push factor. It's that there's a demand for that shelter. So that when people know that it's open, they're going to show up for it, right? I, we have yet to see kind of the coordination with the county's plans as they're thinking about mobile, mobile shelters and such. Uh, but coordination of motel vouchers and so far up until now, we've been pretty arm-in-arm with that. You know, I've been pretty frank with the county, like I don't want to open the navigation center. If I don't also have a voucher and resource or something that helps me manage when we meet that person seventy-six. Or, or we're going up to eighty people or something. I don't want my program to be in the position of telling people that we're full and turning them away, right? We need to have another option for them. And so far, uh, we've been pretty arm-in-arm with the county showing up with those resources. I think if it does become an issue, it may become an issue as a resource issue for the county that we need to work with.
Mayor Protem Sharazai.
Yes, thank you. Um. Yeah, lots of gratitude. We've come a long way over these last few years and, and just. Really appreciate all the work that went into building a policy that's really responsive to what we're hearing from stakeholders. And that, um, this level of detail tonight that you were able to share. So a lot of gratitude there. Um, I wanted to build a little bit on what Counselor Mayakura and Counselor Cruz were talking about. Just more explicitly, we do know that there was another Jefferson County community that was going to open a navigation center. And it looks like they've, um, changed course on that parcel of land. And so the, we hope that the county continues to walk arm-in-arm with us in this work. But is there a consideration that's being discussed around possible reallocation of those dollars? To potentially support the work that we're doing in Lakewood because we are up and running? And we know that the other municipality is not going to be moving that forward.
We haven't had a, a perfectly transparent conversation with. Other municipalities, um, on resource questions. Our, our conversations really have been about the programmatic coordination, how to make. Make sure what we're, what we're doing is accessible and utilized and that. We're a resource when we hit that high watermark of what our capacity can hold. Uh, we, we've neither sent an ask out to other municipalities for. Uh, additional resources, um, or anything. I think though, right now, our limitation is, is going to be the facility, right? So it's going to be that we don't want to go over a seventy-five-person capacity, right? And so I think, I think to, to consider this, um. Consider the pressures that, that we're going to have through the year, uh, with the, with the moved weather, um, criteria. Like my estimates, when I looked at the last three years of, of how many nights, uh, would fit the new weather criteria. It ranged between fifty and seventy nights in a year. That's a lot more nights than we were doing last year. Um, and I do have some concern that, you know, if we don't have some decompression resource. Whether that's a county-based resource or whether that's another navigation center. That's opening in another municipality, like a gym floor can get us pretty far if it's found somewhere in the county, right? Without, without those resources, we'll be in a really hard spot. If we have, uh, March-April weather pattern that looks a lot like. Uh, November eighth, that last day of this last activation. So heavy wet snows, uh, measured in several inches or feet. That bring those one hundred and twenty-six people to our door. Forty-six percent of those people did not stay at our navigation center. We had to find something else for them. So my hope is that other municipalities and, and the county can continue to explore what that. What that something else is and get activated around that before we see those conditions. Uh, in the springtime side of a severe weather season.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Counselor Lo.
Thanks. I'll, I will, I will echo what, what all the other counselors have said. Um, Mr. Connor, I'm, I'm really grateful that we have you on board. And, um, I mean, this is, I. I think this is incredibly important and, and necessary work. And we're grateful you're leading it. And. It's just very clear to me, even looking at, you know. All of the preparation that's been done for this season versus last season, that, that, or last winter, that there's been, um, some really important progress. Um, thank you for, for framing your presentation around, uh, the, the hypothermia issue and the emergency room visits. I think that's a really important metric. Um, and in fact, can I, can I ask that, uh, on at least an annual basis, we continue to get. Um, sort of backward-looking statistics on hypothermia deaths in Jefferson County, if that's something we can continue to look at? Because I, you know, I think that's a very sobering but meaningful statistic for us to be looking at. And, and hopefully we can continue to have that number be. Zero or as close to it as possible. Um, so if we, if we could have, maybe have the city continue to get us that at least annually. To, to assess whether this is continuing to, to save lives. I think that would be great.
Yeah, yeah. And those, those charts and data are gratitude to, uh, Jefferson, uh, Public Health, Department of Public Health for. Uh, helping us get that. And they're, they're building their sophistication around that correlation too. They also want to know more, you know? So, um, we're, we're arm-in-arm and thought partners on, on that. And, um, much gratitude to them for. For helping us create that lens into, into why we're doing this work.
Um, thank you for speaking also to sort of the, how the communications aspect of this works. I, I. Totally agree that, that the need for that to be sort of well-coordinated and streamlined. Um, I've appreciated that we've been getting those. I, I think we're, 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 it clearly seems to be a. Part of the operating procedure that coun- council's getting those updates by email. And I, I find that very helpful. So thank you for doing that. I guess, I mean, I, I know a number of us are already doing that, but I, I would encourage us to continue to share those. Those little infographics on, on social media, um, so that we can do our bit to, to help. Get the word out every time the cold weather shelter is open. So thank you for continuing to do that. Um, one quick thought that relates back to Counselor Cruz's question on food, um. I, my understanding is, you know, that the question of providing evening meals is, you know, properly is, is, is with recovery works and bad enterprises. Um, I know that, you know, last winter, a number of like local restaurants pitched in and donated food. Without, without putting this on like, sort of. On the city to coordinate. I just wonder as, as we continue to sort of fine-tune the communications on this. Is there a way that, that as cold weather gets opened, there could be like. An efficient channel for Lakewood restaurants that do want to contribute a meal to just sort of get in touch with recovery works and like. Sign up a, a few days ahead of time and basically sign up for, for, for food delivery so that maybe recovery works and Bayard can have. Support from the community for restaurants that want to continue to, to support this work.
Yeah, I, I think there's potential there. Like I, I was thinking about this presentation and, and I really, I wanted it to land on. I'm giving you all like a call to action that you could facilitate in your, your communities. I, I struggled. I, I don't know that we're there. Just yet. The, the challenge, I think, um. I, I definitely want, would love to get us to a place where. Our operator for severe weather can coordinate with that energy in the community and bring it forward. Food is like, after staffing, it's the most expensive component of these programs, right? So it, it costs a lot to do. Um, so we could do more conceivably if, if we had community energy occupying that space. I think the challenge and, and the hard part of that is finding the capacity to. Get their arms around that in a way that, that isn't, isn't making a programmatic disruption. So. For instance, you know, we're. We would need a, a volunteer with a meal plan that's. Preparing us for that one twenty-six number, not necessarily just seventy-five people that are sleeping on site each night. But also the people that are coming through and on their way to motel. So we need to kind of think about. That scale and that level, um, and also having that coordinated to somebody who can. Who can manage that. So I, once we're through, um, our solicitation and we know and we've identified an operator. I'd like to kind of work with them and, and see if that can be in their hands to do the thinking and the, and the coordinating work on.
Great. I know it's much, one of the, much easier said than, than done. Um.
Yeah.
Uh, and I, I don't, I don't necessarily, you know, think it's a best practice for us to be running around like soliciting restaurants like the day of when, when emerg- when, when emergency shelter. Opens. Um, but, but if you all do come up with like a centralized way that restaurants can, can sign up for this. I mean, I, I certainly think a number of us would be glad to go to restaurants in our community and, and sort of proactively offer this as a place that they can. Particularly if they can plan a few days ahead of time. We're not just asking them for the moment. Um, I think that would be another call to action to continue putting it in council. Um. One of the things we, we, we saw in the, in the, in the Q and A we did on the budget is I, I think they, they said there was a, it was a four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollar. Um, was budgeted for cold weather, emergency cold weather shelter in twenty twenty-five. Um. Do you, do you have what you need, like as you sort of survey things to, to fund what, what is necessary? Um, in twenty twenty-five? And I, I, I assume you'll say yes. I mean, you, you, you are clearly doing a good job. I, I guess I would just, um, encourage, also encourage you and, and staff. As you think about what's necessary the following year, to like really make sure that we're, we're. We're, we're, uh, we're budgeting what's, what's necessary for this. I think, I think clearly there's like a really strong appetite on. On council to continue to support this work. I think we see this as really important and essential. And. If, if we need to, you know, continue to iterate on that number, I hope, I hope that we will.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for the question. It's always a, a welcome question for, uh, administrators like me, uh. Uh, to know, do you have enough? I, what I'll, what I'll say is I think, I think the program design and needs are going to fundamentally change. Uh, once we're out of, out of a structure of activating fifty to seventy nights a year for seventy-five people with. Modular materials and such that, that go into that. Um. Once we're operating in a capacity where we're providing more, more, uh, ongoing shelter support. Uh, then things start to shift and change. Cause that's when I'm, that's when I'm going to, there's, there's two ways that you, you manage. Your shelter, right? You either build more shelters and bring more people in, or you help them get out of the shelter to a solution to housing. And that's the kind of program that, that's where I'll be asking for the case management. That's where I'll be asking for, um, the support services that are necessary for folks to move through to. Uh, housing solutions. So it's kind of, it's harder to do when you're, you're only know that you're operating. Fifty to seventy nights out of the year. And the main objective of that between the hours of seven P M and seven A M. Is to make sure that people are, lives are being saved while they sleep, right? So, so I think, you know, in the short year that we turn around this facility and redesign the facility. We'll also be redesigning the program. And that's when the question about. Uh, budget and, and kind of engaging our county partners and other municipalities in that, in that, um. Planning for budget, uh, really becomes, uh, quite a different, quite a different thing.
Great. I, I'll wrap up here, Mr. Connor. I'll just thank you again. Two, two final quick notes. Um. Uh, clearly there's a lot of interest in this, certainly from, from me and a lot of others in council. Um, I think that we don't want to create work for you, but I, I do think it'd be great to just get like sort of a, a final action report on, on cold. You know, how the season went as we wrap up in like the, the March-April timeline. Would certainly love to see just numbers on how, when, what, what worked well, what didn't work well. Um, uh, again, would, would encourage the city to, to really make sure that we, we have the resources to do this and not. Make sure that this isn't shortchanged. I mean, I understand this is not a light lift. Um. We just echo Counselor Stinks, I think, makes, makes an excellent point. Like I, I totally, I get that Plan A is have the new renovated center open next winter. Um, we don't have to go into it now, but I, I do, I do think it's worth like thinking about what our Plan B is if there's a delay. And it's still under construction next winter and, and what, what the city would do then. Um, and last, I just want to reiterate what, um, what the Mayor Protem and others already mentioned. Um, I think this is a critical, really important thing that we're doing. And it is not reasonable for Lakewood to be the only resource for this for the entire county. That is not a reasonable thing. That is not a. That is not optimal government. We want this to be a resource for people that live in Lakewood. This should not be the only recourse that's available for people in. Wheat Ridge and Arvada and Edgewater and, you know, Golden and everywhere in, in Jefferson County, right? Like that is, that is not a best practice. We want to make sure that we're saving lives and. We really do need our partners in county, in the county, particularly with the passage of one A. Um, and other cities to, to work with us so that there's a, there's a second resource available. Somewhere else in Jefferson County so that this isn't the only, you know, not just. Sure, services, support, funding, absolutely. But, but we really do need a, a second navigation center type solution somewhere else in the county. So there's a second place that people can go. And it's not all on you and your team and the recovery works team to figure this out.
Counselor Ryan.
I, I, I'd like to pick up on that last comment by, uh, Counselor Low and, and a number of others. Uh, but frame it a little bit differently. What can we as, on city council and as the city encourage? Uh, others in Jefferson County to step up? We thought we were close with, with one of our city partners and it doesn't. Look like it's going to move forward, uh, at least anytime in the near future, but what can we do to help? uh at least anytime in the near future. But what can we do to help encourage others to step up so that we do get that second location opened up?
Yeah, I think um, I mean, that's a that's a good question. I think, I mean, definitely engage your your contacts and continue celebrating the work that that we are doing, but recognizing that there's limits to that work and what can be what can be provided. No, I I think like there's there's some boundaries that that I have, you know, I I don't want to wind up being in this situation where, you know, everything that's above seventy five is turned away to go somewhere else that I don't know where they're they're going. That that's going to weigh really heavily on our ability to sustain a navigation center or to move this navigation center to a night to night basis. Like if we if if we can't control for that, it it'll be a harder thing to control for later on when we're trying to do this every single night uh of the year, right? So uh making that clear to partners and trying to to uh gather their understanding on that. I I think this is an important.
Well, and equally important is the work that you've been doing, and I echo what a number has said much more eloquently than I um about to say, but thank you for the excellent presentation and thoroughness of the presentation and helping us understand where we might be able to move forward from here. So thank you again.
Thank you, Counselor.
All right, and that looks like the last question we have this evening on that topic. So thank you so much uh again for joining us and all the work that you and your team have put to get put into um being able to present this tonight. And with that, maybe, Chris, we get to send you off onto your actual evening. I don't know if you'll be joining us for sustainability, but thank you for everything so far. All right. And then with that, we will move over to our second topic for the evening, our community sustainability update. And for that, I'd like to introduce everybody Travis Parker, the chief of our Sustainability and Community Development Division. I get mixed up on the departments and division. So we'll uh maybe, Mr. Parker, you can shed some light on that. I know we had some reorganizational shifts earlier this year um in addition or in as part of your presentation on our community sustainability update.
Happy to do that. I hope you're seeing my presentation come up.
We are.
Yeah, and I will introduce people as we go along. Um, I'm here tonight, as we all know, to chat a little bit about sustainability. I know a lot of people have been looking forward to this discussion. Um, and online, we did a sixty five minute presentation with all of this information. Tonight, I am, we're not going to repeat all of that for you live. I'm going to go quickly through just the beginning portions of this, the the overview and the background of the department. Um, we have all of the staff available, though, who were part of that presentation and who will be able to uh replicate any of it that you'd like to talk about or dig deeper into anything that you want to ask questions about. Uh, but just, you know, as a big overview, sustainability obviously has been a top priority for city council and the community in Lakewood for a number of years. And that encompasses all portions of sustainability, not just climate change and greenhouse gas emissions, but, you know, protecting eco- ecosystems and biological diversity. I don't know why my screen keeps jumping. Um, and as well as social and economic sustainability. So all aspects of sustain sustainability are important and are part of our uh department's work plan. Um, over the past decade, our sustainability staff in Lakewood has steadily grown year over year. Um, currently, our sustainability division has seven employees with two new employees coming on in the coming year. Um, and there are another twenty five or so employees dedicated to sustainability throughout the organizations and public works and community resources and other parts of the organization. Um, tonight, I am joined by Jeff Wong, Caitlin Long, Emily Jackson, and Christie Saroni. I apologize. I don't know why my thing's jumping, um who will be here to talk about their individual pieces and answer any questions that you have. Um, you can see on the right side of the screen, some bubbles with names in them. These are um positions that will be filled in the coming year. So uh we are currently interviewing to replace Jonathan Wachtel in the Sustainability Manager position. We have two positions that will be hired in January for or or in twenty twenty five for building performance. And then there will be a construction and demolition technician as well. So a lot of new functionality coming in sustainability and and new uh new employees. Um, obviously, we're all familiar with the Lakewood Sustainability Plan. This was the city's first sustainability plan. It won awards when it was created in twenty fifteen, and it is reaching its ten year anniversary. This is the plan that lays out the goals and for our department and our city um and really creates the work plan for sustainability employees in the city. Every year, we come to you with um a report and an update on how we are doing on meeting those adopted targets and those implementation strategies. And it's important to keep in mind that these targets and strategies were intentionally aggressive and intentionally ambitious. So we aren't always on track to meet all those, but we certainly do our best and uh bring forward every year uh plans and initiatives to help us get there. Cur- currently, we are on track for thirteen out of our twenty eight uh adopted targets, and we've made significant progress on thirty eight of our implementation strategies. Um, just like with the uh presentation on Lakewood Speaks, we are not going to live go through all of those uh targets and strategies, but we are prepared to talk about any that council have questions about or want to dig into deeper. Um, obviously, the sustainability plan is approaching its ten year anniversary, and it's time to take a look at doing it again and updating it. This time around, we are looking at making it a part of the overall comprehensive plan. So rather than doing a separate standalone sustainability plan, uh off to the side of our comprehensive plan, we think the idea of a comprehensive plan is that it's comprehensive. It looks at everything in the city, and that includes our sustainability. So we are in the comprehensive plan process that is currently overweight. We are looking at having a large focus on sustainability and climate action um and bringing you a plan that encompasses those areas and and sets ambitious new targets and goals for sustainability. Um, one other thing I talked about in the online presentation I'll touch on briefly tonight is in addition to staffing going up year over year, um there is a lot of new revenue in the sustainability world that we can use to further our sustainability initiatives in the city. A number of those are here on the screen. Um, there is revenue coming in now through our Climate Protection and Sustainability Program. So this includes fee and lieu money for enhanced development menu. This includes uh forfeited deposits for greenhouse gas uh or or excuse me, for construction and demolition deposits. This includes fee and lieu for greenhouse gas uh targets. So every new development has a lot of sustainability requirements on it, and a lot of them are meeting those. For some, the the targets are just too high to meet. They pitch in so that the city can spend that money to further achieve our goals. Uh, many of you are familiar with the bag fee. Uh, this is a state revenue that state law sent fee on uh single use bags, and that brings a lot of revenue in for sustainability purposes to the city. To date, the city's raised nearly seven hundred thousand dollars um from that bag fee revenue, and we expect that to continue year over year and to be available for programs. In addition, we're always looking outside of our general fund and outside of our uh local revenue sources for other ways to to raise revenue and to further initiatives. So to that end, we regularly apply for federal and regional grants. Two that you have heard about recently are a five million dollar Department of Energy grant for the Building Performance Program that we're going to be talking a lot about in the spring um and a nearly two hundred thousand dollars for E V charging stations at our rec centers. And then we're always looking at regional opportunities as well. We have a number of regional partners that we spend a lot of time and effort with um that con- consistently have uh ongoing funding opportunities. Uh, we are aware that the city council is very interested in the subject and wants to spend time with us and learning more about it. So I've outlined on this slide our touch points with you over the next six months um that are already scheduled, in addition to whatever else might be added in the interim. Um, you have asked us to come and work with you at your council retreat in early February, so I've got that on the calendar. Um, as I mentioned, we'll be coming to you in March and April to talk about building energy benchmarking um and that new program and maybe introduce some of the new employees that are coming on board. And then, as I mentioned, sustainability will be a big part of our comprehensive plan and our zoning update that are both coming forward in the spring. So we'll be uh in front of council in March and May and June to talk about the comprehensive plan and the zoning code and the sustainability components of those documents. So with that, I will stop the presentation, and Jeff, Caitlin, Emily, Christie, and I are here to answer your questions.
All right. Thank you for that. We have no council questions. There we go. We have two council questions. We'll go ahead and kick things off with Counselor Labure.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Mayor. Um, appreciate the uh presentation. So always a lot of things to unpack um in these presentations and um I'm doing my best to try to decipher some of it. But a couple of questions, you know, I was looking at our sustainability plan, just kind of getting refreshed on sort of where we've been and where we're going. And a couple of things uh stood out, and and then also a few other things I just wanted to point out and just make sure it's on your radar. Um, one question I had was lead building requirements. That's been our in our sustainability plan for, you know, this entire time. And when can we just get a plan for lead building requirements for the city sent to us so we can approve something like that? Is that something that's on your radar to cut get come to us or?
The the so is the question a a requirement that every new building be lead?
Yeah.
We can certainly look at this. So right now, as you're aware, um uh any lead building meets automatically meets all of its E D M requirements. So we certainly put a lot of encouragement on that. The main difficulty, and I'm happy to let others on the sustainability team jump in and chat about this, but the main difficulty for lead is is it's a a an incredible cost to getting that certification. So there are buildings that can meet a lot of the lead standards and could and and meet the the requirements of a lead silver or a lead gold project that don't want to pay the, you know, quarter million dollars to go through the certification process. So that's, you know, one of the answers is, you know, we can give credit for those lead components in our E D M process without requiring them to achieve that certification. Uh, but we're certainly willing to to look at, you know, making that a requirement in, you know, just across the board.
Well, and I really just mean it for our look for our municipal buildings, you know, we have a big project coming up. I'd like to make sure that we're on the on the lead building train. I mean, of course, we do want to make, and I do think we should be looking outside of our current building codes to to strengthen those and make them, you know, more sustainable and more efficient. But I'm really thinking about the municipal buildings as well.
Fair enough. Yeah, we we can definitely take a look at that.
I think that's something we should do. Um, and then I on the climate change vulnerability study, I know we're doing that, but the council needs to approve a climate change vulnerability plan, is my understanding. Is that something uh that we would be looking at, you know, as a council next year sometime?
Yeah, I I'm gonna let Caitlin talk about the study that she's doing or leading and um what next steps for that might be.
Thanks.
Hi there. I apologize. I seem to be having some trouble with my camera. Um, let's turn that back off so it's not distracting. Anyways, thank you for that question, and I do think that um we're in a bit of a wait and see mode at the moment with that. We want to get through the study, which is somewhat of a first half of a climate action plan. And then we wanted to see what exactly those preliminary results are telling us and see how much we are able to integrate into the comprehensive plan as we're going through that process simultaneously and see where all of that comes together. And if we if the result ends up being that we need to do a separate climate add up, uh separate climate action plan of some sort, then that's a step that we can take in the future. And if it's not something that we need to do directly and we can focus on certain strategic initiatives like a decarbonization plan or looking at um community resilience more specifically and dive into more of those specific topics, that's an option that we could do as well um instead of a full climate action plan. So I think we're exploring options and just seeing where things come with doing the study at the moment.
Yeah. Um, and then just a couple of comments. A fire mitigation, um that's something I think we need to be thinking a lot about. Obviously, Superior spending multiple millions of dollars now in the fire mitigation uh business, and we have a lot of uh green spaces and fields uh just west of the city that I think probably need to be thinking about that. Um, you know, or Green Mountain and all sorts of uh, you know, those spaces. Um, want to point out the Department of Justice has a nice grant, uh the city of Tampa, which was fun to see. They just got a million dollars to get a bunch of electric uh police cars in their fleet. And uh so there is a DOJ grant out there um that might be advantageous for our police if they're looking to uh electrify, which I think is something we should be doing. Um, had an opportunity to check out one of those Chevy Blazers. I think we should be, you know, leading by example and uh said uh they'd like to bring one out to the city for a demo, so hopefully I'll get it down to City Hall and everybody could drive it around um here soon. Uh, so just want to make those comments and see if there's anything else. I'll leave it there for now, but I'm sure uh everybody will have some interesting things to talk about and come back. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Singh.
Thank you. Appreciate the emphasis on sustainability. As you've mentioned, yes, of course, it's very, very important to to all of us. And um my point, just having come through the budget season and uh we carried around that big old budget book, and I did pull it out today. And I thought, huh, does it show us somewhere where some of these monies, like just this small amount of what was it uh that came in from the bags, nearly seven hundred thousand, something like that? You just showed us one of those slides, and then you also talked about revenue coming in. Um, climate, the climate protection, the sustainability revenue, two hundred twenty one thousand raised to date. So just my my main point is, and maybe I missed it, but um in case I didn't miss it, that we would be able to go in the budget book and say, this revenue came in and we spent it on blank. And so maybe you want to tell me that, yeah, it's there and you missed it. Or um go ahead and talk to me about how we might see in the budget book some of the 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 expenditures for this sustainability work. Thanks.
Absolutely. So yeah, yes and no. The some of it's there in the budget and some of it isn't yet. The the way that uh the city does its budgeting is, you know, we we don't put things in the budget until we know what we're spending it on. And some of that money we have started creating plans for. So there's um sixty five thousand dollars for some um composting piloting program. And there's, I think, three hundred and fifty five dollars for some climate action um things that we're working on. So um some of that money has, we've started putting together a plan for, we put it in the budget. Others will be working on it twenty twenty five and will either in revised twenty five budget or in the twenty six proposed budget, add those programs in as as we're building those out. So right now, we're in the inviolable place of having more money available than we have plans for yet, but that won't be the case for long.
Okay, great. Thanks. Thanks for that explanation. And uh so in the meantime, the money that's not been designated yet, is it sitting in the general fund? Is that where you see it or where where is where is?
The money that that's come in, uh I that's a great, that's a question for finance, and we can get that back to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Cruz.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Parker, for this presentation, and you to the whole team for the very helpful um comprehensive presentation. Um, I found that very, very insightful and very helpful. Um, so I appreciate that. I found that very, very insightful and very helpful. So I appreciate that work that you put into it. I know it is very valuable for us in understanding this work. And this means so much to all of us. So I think I just had a couple of questions on some some specific things from the presentation. So in the kind of building upgrade opportunities, maybe the answer is this is still being designed, which is totally fine. But I was just curious kind of like what the upgrade opportunities in low income areas for building audits that was mentioned in the presentation was, what those might look like.
I am going to turn to Jeff Wong to help me answer that question.
Yeah, thanks for that question, Counselor Cruz. I think equity is is really important and central to a lot of the work that we're doing. And right now, there are a lot of weatherization opportunities, particularly for income qualified households coming from both our utility as well as the Energy Office. And so the Energy Office just recently released within the past couple of weeks, actually, that first phase of the Inflation Reduction Act funding that they have in place. And that will support both weatherization and electrification for our income qualified homes. So right now, our approach as staff is to communicate that to our residents.
Great. That's super helpful. Thank you. I'm looking forward to seeing, yeah, those communications and amplifying them. Another question that I had, or maybe it was like a comment, an idea, just to put it out into the ether, was I really appreciated kind of in the presentation around waste diversion and circularity, circularity, still learning all these terms. The kind of talk about food recovery and some of the opportunities that the Action Center is providing. Just wanted to plug in the air in speaking with them recently. It seems like space is a challenge and that there's more food that could be recovered and as at a time when we have more neighbors hungry than ever, you know, like they've been seeing such an increase in their services. I think that that's a really exciting opportunity to intersect some of our work, providing basic services for neighbors with some of our important climate goals. So just putting that out there that there's more, I think, growth to be had and opportunities there. So nobody needs to respond unless you want to, but I just wanted to put that out there. And then the final question I had, we got a comment, a couple of comments on Liquid Speaks about trees. So just wanted to kind of put a general question about how tree canopy and all of those pieces factor into our plans.
Absolutely. So we, yeah, we will be spending some time in 2025, working on tree canopy with the Community Resources Staff. So the forestry staff, they're in Community Resources. We're going to look at both a general plan to increase tree canopy as well as obviously the tree canopy rules specific to development. So the the procedures for preserving trees, for replacing trees, the cost for taking down trees. So all of that's on the table in 2025.
Counselor Maia Gru.
Thank you. And thank you for this, the presentation that was online and for this. And I'm excited to see our sustainability work being continued to be dug in on. I also really, I want to just like say that I'm very enthusiastic about the sustainability plan being a part of like the comprehensive plan and therefore the zoning rate, et cetera. I think this idea that we're able to essentially like look at the way that our our housing and our parks and our sustainability and our businesses like are all working together, like just as you said, comprehensive plan. But I think that this is, that's something that's been discussed in the community with like sometimes enthusiasm and sometimes concern. So I want to be just very, very clear that I I feel really supportive of tying those things together. I think it will give the sustainability plan more grit and more teeth. And that is what we need to see. I think one of my sort of, I don't know that you totally have to speak to this. It's more something that I want to like signal. So you talked about the fee in lieu for the development menu and something that I want to, that I've gotten a couple of questions about as this was coming up was really about that that fee is for projects for whom basically like their points, like the points that they need to get based on their square footage or units or what have you within the development menu, like exceeds what is sort of a reasonable amount of points within the menu. And that's where we charge that fee. I just want to make sure that that's how that works.
Yeah, I can I can clarify that. So the original EDM approved back in 2019 required 50 points and did not allow any fee in lieu. We made it much more robust a couple of years ago that we, the staff and the council ultimately created a much more robust enhanced development menu. It requires 50 points for a lot of projects and then really large projects, it can it can require a lot more than 50. And that first 50 cannot be bought out under any circumstances. So the fee in lieu, you're right, is just for those super large projects that have really large point totals that may not even be able to find enough points in the list to meet their point total. They still have to achieve at least 50. And they can introduce the rest as well, or they can, you know, pay a fee in lieu for some of those higher points.
Great. I think that as we, as we talk about like our parkland fees, and then we're talking about like sort of the comp plan overall, and then and then these fees. Something that I want to just put out now, which is that I think this idea of a broader sustainability pool of money like makes sense to me. And so the development menu fees, which just again reiterate are only for this like above and beyond due to, due to the size of the project, right? Not actually due to them being able to buy their way out of having the baseline of energy efficiency, water efficiency and things that are required. But but to put out this idea of like a linkage fee, right, of thinking about our sidewalks, our bike lanes, our lighting, our park maintenance, our road maintenance, our climate impact and our water impact all as one big thing as like a potential future as we continue to like look and wrestle with comprehensive plan with zoning, with the sustainability plan, with the perk fee, right, that that like I took to me that there's like an opportunity to actually be able to invest in, in to take those, all those dollars and like invest in like better, more thoughtful, more connected strategies if we were able to create like more flexibility. Which is kind of a wild thing to just put out on this study session. And it's not a fully baked idea. I want to be clear. But there are circumstances where we must have a fee in lieu. And we also don't actually have infinite parkland available to acquire. We also don't have like, like, like each project, to your point, does not actually have infinite technology that they can use for sustainability. We can go further than we are right now, but there is then still that upper cap where we want to continue to charge for that impact to our community. And I want to make sure we don't lose that. And then my my question is is about the regional coordination. I think Counselor Labure brought up fire mitigation. Counselor Cruz brought up like the energy efficiency subsidies, which I know can come from lots of places. I know that the county works a lot on fire mitigation. I know Excel works a lot on energy efficiency and sustainability of our energy grid. And just wondering what, how are we handling and deepening our countywide or regional coordination and collaboration on some of these sustainability measures? Particularly when we get to the point of needing more grid modernization, when we get to the point of like electric vehicle charging stations that like makes sense to everybody as you drive across a city. Basic sort of things like that. But even, yeah, so a lot of the climate resiliency is also definitely not a city boundaried issue. So I was wondering if you could speak to the regional collaboration or if we just, you know, we're getting started on that, we need to do more.
Well, and that's really a question that any of the team members here could answer because all of them are doing that in their individual areas. So obviously, you know, Caitlin Long is working regionally on climate vulnerability, right? And Jeff Wong on energy and, you know, regional incentives for that and MJ in zero waste and circularity. So that's something that we're all doing. Maybe I'll let one of them, Jeff or Caitlin, jump in and talk a little bit about the regional collaboration efforts.
Yeah, I'm happy to chat about that. I think, thanks. Thanks for pointing that out. I think that we have an understanding here in the front range that all our work is is very similar. We have very similar goals and it makes sense to regularly collaborate and share resources. And I think one great example is the $200 million grant that Dr. Cog just got with council support as well. And we regularly meet weekly, sometimes more often than that, to talk about how that grant is going to be distributed equitably throughout our community. So I think that's one example of how we coordinate. And then within the county as well, we regularly meet because it makes sense because we're working on the same thing. So I would say regional collaboration is is one of our strengths in the division here and we'll continue to find those opportunities to advance our work.
Mayor Protaum Sharzai.
Yes, thank you. Perfect timing because Mr. Wong, I wanted to talk a little bit about the big funding that we're starting to see coming in from Dr. Cog. And I also wanted to just recognize that a lot of the money that we're being, that's being secured in the region for regional approaches to this is predicated on the great work that's coming out of Lakewood. So it's my understanding that Lakewood's sustainability staff played a pretty significant role in the Climate Pollution Reduction Grant, the Million Dollar Planning Grant that we had. It was to put together a regional plan for pollution reduction and was able to be accomplished in 11 months. And a lot of that is because we're tracking this information and we could share our numbers on greenhouse gas inventory, plans around workforce. There's a number of things that are included in this plan that will lead to an implementation grant that we're hoping to receive in the region. And so I wanted to just recognize that because I do think that we get really focused sometimes on what we're doing in Lakewood and that's important. But there is no way that we're going to solve for this in an insulated level. I think just thinking about the conversation we had about the Navigation Center and our unhoused population, Lakewood continues to be a leader in that space and we're not going to solve for that alone. And I did want to just reinforce there is a $200,000 or $200 million grant that just came in through Dr. Cog for decarbonization. And it's really rooted in an equity lens. So building on what Counselor Cruz was talking about. It's talking about prioritizing low income and disadvantaged communities and ensuring that the benefits of building decarbonization are equitably distributed. So this helps to get in front of things. We get really focused on rebates and what this work is happening at a regional level is helping to offset that cost. And I expect that because Lakewood had such a great showing the start of this process that we'll be able to be really participatory in accessing this money. I did want to go back though. I think it was Ms. Long was talking about like the need for a climate action plan. And I just wonder if that's municipalities love to survey and research and we've already done that. Like we sort of know what the what the challenges are. And because we've already participated in this regional action plan and we know there's a lot of similarity, like is that not the place that we would start or would we be starting from scratch?
Caitlin Long, answer that.
Again, thank you for that question, Counselor Sharzai. I think that that's definitely, like you said, that's one of the best places that we can start. There has been so much work that's already been done regionally. Both with that grant process and then in our own sustainability plan from 10 years ago and the study that we're doing right now that's building on the Hazard Mitigation Plan, that's a county level plan. So yes, there's a lot of work that's already being done. And so I don't know if we need to go through a full separate planning process. That would be a whole other public outreach process and going through a couple of years of all of that in order just to have the same information essentially that we have right now. And I think that's the question that we'll answer more once we get through the comprehensive plan process and see how all of that actually ends up coming out. And so we'll have a decision hopefully within the next year and whether or not we'll need to take that additional step at this time.
Great. Thanks. That's helpful. And I would just encourage folks on council, if you haven't had a chance to review that document on the it's on the Dr. Cog website. You know, this is a big initiative from that organization and and we are the fifth biggest community across the metro area. So what the metropolitan organization is doing is important to us. So just building on that concept of regional solutions. Thank you.
Counselor Nystrom.
Thank you. Yeah, appreciate the information, everyone. I think I think the breakdown was was helpful in the plan. I guess I'm I'm kind of looking at how do we make sure we're kind of tying all these things together and there's a more clarity on what's being actioned and what is still pending and all of that because we've got you know, the dashboard out there where there's a number of things that are marked complete or in progress, but it's not really clear on what's been done. There's no links to anything or, you know, and I know Counselor Sinks has brought this up in the past too, but I struggle with that. And then, you know, we've got the updates that come out and then we've got all the items that were discussed in last year's planning session. I should say 2024 planning session. And I just don't, I'm not clear on what what is actually being worked on and where we stand on some of these things. And then I guess to follow on to that, you know, I think it's phenomenal that we have this grant coming and that we have you know, efforts underway in terms of mitigation projects and things like that. My concern is that we are not moving the needle on greenhouse gas consumption. And that, you know, the sustainability plan references a couple of times what Excel Energy is doing to reduce their you know, coal burning and greenhouse gas utilization to produce or not, you know, production that they're creating electricity with. So moving towards more sustainable initiatives, but you know, like for instance, what's what's in the the items from the planning session last year and what clean energy at Lakewood has been advocating for a long time is some type of incentive program. So we can catch the people in the middle. We have this grant coming that's going to help the light our neighborhoods, right? And typically people in higher income echelons are not going to participate in these things and they're not going to reach out on this. But we have a lot of residents that were, if we could reduce greenhouse gas utilization, it will help us meet our air quality goals, which we're behind on, right? So I'm not clear on if anybody's working on a program development for that ask or where we stand on those things at this point.
Absolutely. So I'll start with the first thing about reporting out. Yeah, we've heard from the council loud and clear that you'd like, yeah, better information about what's happening, what we're working on, what we're accomplishing and what we're not. So we're definitely looking into how we can report more often and better. And we're going to be working with you at your planning session in a couple of months to to figure out, you know, the best way to get you the information that you need in 2025 and beyond. In terms of greenhouse gas, I think 2025 is going to be a big year for new greenhouse gas initiatives in Lakewood. I think, you know, starting with building energy performance and benchmarking and starting that program. We're, we've got a bunch of new waste and circularity work coming on with the new employee that that started last year, earlier this year in that. So that I think this is more stuff that we can talk through at the planning session, but we definitely want to continue to add programs on the local level that, as you said, you know, match the work that's being done on the regional level. Obviously, Excel is the biggest change agent. Has the biggest capacity to change greenhouse gas emissions, but we need to, need to and want to do our part on a local level as well. So we'll continue to to bring you programs like the the building energy performance program. So we'll continue to to bring you programs like the the building energy performance program.
Okay, um, thank you. Appreciate that. But again, I I strongly feel that we need to be doing something more from a residential perspective. You know, and the and the building. I mean, everybody knows it's common knowledge that, you know, buildings, large buildings are a key contributor to emissions. But clearly residences and we are a big hitter in that department. And our greenhouse gas consumption has gone up instead of going the other direction. So, um, you know, it. I I guess where I am is we're kind of at a point where we're very close to, we're in a non attainment area. We're very close to not meeting. Significant goals that are coming up in twenty twenty seven. I don't think it's realistic that we're going to hit that mark. And that that will have some implications for us. And and I just think we need to get moving on this sooner rather than later. Um, and and again, in terms of the budget itself, I mean, we need a definitive budget for these. Uh, initiatives beyond grants. Like, we cannot rely on just fees. And, um, you know, arguably, some of those fees are concerning in the way they're obtained. So, um, you know, I I would like to see that be something that is put together and. Incorporated into the budget planning coming up. You know, and as you said, if possible, we need to get something on there that will. Be part of the revised twenty twenty five budget. So that we we can start making inroads on that this year. Thank you.
Mr. Parker, are you clear on what the ask is there? I'm not sure I completely followed.
Well, and I should I should mention that in in my list of things coming in twenty twenty five, you know, we we are certainly focusing on residential energy performance as well. We're, as we talked about a few weeks ago with council, we're looking at regional and state programs for energy. Uh, rebates, energy programs. And we're also with a lot of that climate fund money that we've got, um, coming from fees and lose and 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 deposits. We will look at backfilling those energy rebates with with additional grants and rebates to Lakewood citizens. With the, yeah, with the very with the exact intent of improving energy performance and lowering greenhouse gas consumption. Or emissions.
Thank you. And Counselor Nystrom, were you asking to for more clarity? Like, um, there's the part that is the fees you mentioned and and we can follow that. But were you were you asking maybe for more clarity within the budget, like general fund? What is covering sustainable improvements in the city? From the non-fee generating sources? Is that part of it?
And and that needs to be, um, yes, to answer your question, yes. But, you know, again, going into the twenty twenty five budget process, we need to fund additional things. But again, I'm not real clear on. The the grants that have come in, how those are going to be allocated and what the targets are for that. So that that would be another thing to clarify. But but again, I I just, you know, I think we need a significant sense of urgency. And I'm not saying people aren't working hard and putting their rolling up their sleeves. I know everybody involved in this is doing that. But, you know, again, we're talking about fire mitigation and the whole those things. And we're not doing the proactive upfront initiatives right now, which is what concerns me.
Counselor Lo.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Parker, and and thank you to the team. Um, just want to step back for one second. I I I I'm appreciating this session. I'm I'm glad that we have a number of upcoming sessions on on the books that Mr. Parker previewed. You know, just for for folks, for the admittedly probably somewhat small, modest audience that that tunes in and watches these uh, these recordings in full. I'm I am going to go ahead and just highlight that there is there's an hour and five minute presentate like recording of of Mr. Parker and the Sustainability Team. Walking through and in quite a bit of detail, all the different work that they are doing. I I guess I just want to want to take a moment to acknowledge, like, I I think an immense amount of impressive work is happening, like, uh, across the team. Uh, there's there's multiple different staff that are working on multiple different initiatives that roll up into this this myriad of the twenty eight different metrics that. That are, you know, that that Mr. Parker alluded to. Um, I have to admit, I didn't, I I haven't completely finished the hour and five minute recording, but I'm almost all the way through it, almost all the way through it. I'm going to go back and finish it. And there's there's a lot of really good, um, there's a lot of really good content in here. I I sometimes worry a little bit, like, part of the challenge here is it's just it's very difficult to communicate all the different like initiatives that you all are doing. In like a really clear, coherent way. And so I think that that sometimes there's a disconnect between the community perceiving that we're like. That we're not doing enough on sustainability versus quite a bit of work that is is ongoing in this in this area that I think is very impressive. So I guess I just want to start by thank you. Thank you to everyone on the Zoom. There's a lot of really impressive work going on. And and frankly, I think like the the progress that has been made relative to where we were five or 10 years ago is impressive. I I thought it might be useful to just frame frame the the a a core question this way. Mr. Parker and Mr. Wong kind of teed up this this central goal of. The original twenty fifteen plan goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions by twenty percent below two thousand seven levels by twenty twenty five. We're on track for that. So kudos to that. And then Mr. Wong sort of pointed out, and this is this is previewed in the report, that in terms of the twenty thirty science based target of reducing greenhouse gas emissions by sixty one percent from twenty eighteen levels. Were were not on track for that yet. So and and then Mr. Wong like laid out a number of of initiatives the city is is up to, to make further progress on that goal. And those are are further expounded on in that hour and five minute recording. Um, I guess my really high level question is like, do we? And perhaps part of the answer is we 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 in a in a year, we'll have sort of the update that we'll get on like Lakewood's greenhouse gas emissions. So we'll know more once we get like updated greenhouse gas emissions figures. But like, how i- in terms of if if you take all the different initiatives that that the Sustainability Department is up to right now. How much do we think when those initiatives are implemented that will actually put us on track to meet this twenty thirty goal? Versus, do we think it's the case that all of those? Efforts will add up to further progress, but still leave us short of an admittedly very ambitious twenty thirty goal. And we need to take more action at sort of the at the city, city manager, city council level. Above and beyond all the different initiatives that you all have underway. That that to me is kind of like the sixty four thousand dollar question at the heart of this presentation. I'm going to see if Jeff Wong wants to take a crack at that.
Yeah, I'm happy to to respond to that. And and thanks for that insightful question. The answer is it's complicated and it's difficult to model. Uh, projected greenhouse gas emissions reductions from various policies, but we can do our best. Uh, for example, for this benchmarking policy that we are bringing to a study session next year. That is something that we can specifically model because we have a framework in place for a lot of the other higher level programs that we haven't necessarily worked out the details for. Um, we don't know exactly what those greenhouse gas emissions reductions will look like. But we are able to generally model everything. I think it really depends on the specific program and policy that we put in place. So at this point, we're not able to specifically quantify and project those greenhouse gas savings to twenty thirty. Um, so as we put together these kind of big policies, especially the building performance one, we'll be able to have more specific numbers in terms of projections.
Yeah, that that's fair. I that makes sense. I think in some of the future sort of deep dives that we've got on the calendar that you all kind of previewed the our upcoming dates with you all. It it, I think it's probably reasonable to assume that although we're making really good progress, we are, we are not like, I I agree with the way you kind of frame things. Mr. Wong, like, we're not, we're 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 not yet on target to 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 meet this sixty one percent reduction emission, um, production goal. So I I I think it might be asked in terms of in in terms of the time we're spending with you. I I think the question that really matters for us is not is a little less like all the different things that you already are doing. But more like what does council need to do that we're not doing to help you meet that goal? Like, that to me is the central question that I think we ought to be digging in on. And and you know, that that could feed into some of the things that Counselor Nice term has got brought up in terms of, you know, some new requirements around new builds. I mean, there's a number of different tools, you know, it I think it feeds back into the zoning rewrite that I know that. Um, Mr. Mr. Parker, your your team is already working on. But to me, I think it's probably useful to say a lot of of really good work is going on. And we, as a result of that good work, we are on track to meet this twenty twenty five goal. But we're not yet on track to meet the twenty thirty goal. So what else can we do to make sure we get there? Like, that that to me is kind of how I I guess my two senses, how I would frame our future conversations. And 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 I think we all ought to ought to also acknowledge, like, all the all the work, again, that is is already ongoing. From the super high level, let me let me pull down to just ask one, well, maybe two very in the weeds points. One, uh, Mr. Burger, you and I have talked about this a little bit. I I think it's very, I ju- I just think it's hard because in part because there's all these different revenue sources and these different programs. For, um, the community to like fully get its head around what's going on. Because it's complicated, which is not your fault, no one's fault. I I kind of feel like that's that's underlying some of the questions that Counselor Sinks asks, that's underlying maybe some of the questions Counselor Nystromax asked. I would recommend thinking in the twenty twenty six budget about how we like better visualize this. Like, how do we sort of show the different revenue sources? And how do we stack them all together so that we have like a pie chart or a graphic that really shows like, here's all the different dollars, like. Across all these different programs that are going to sustainability work. Here's where they come from. Here's where they're going to, like, sources and uses. I I think I think this is an area that cries out for like a clear sources and uses graph in the budget next year. And if viable, once the the Sustainability Manager is hired in in sort of some of the future sessions that we have. Um, that to me would just help us have a sort of a be be grounded in a conversation about like, how much total money are we talking about? Where's it coming from? Where's it going? And last question, Mr. Burger, you probably. Didn't, hopefully, this isn't isn't a surprise. I'm happy to talk about this more offline. Can I just ask where we are on on solar app? I I know we've gotten some conversation, we've had some conversations with Public Works. We've had some conversations with your department on that. Um, I thanks again, Counselor Nystrom, for attending the 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 information session at Enroll. Um, to me, that that just strikes me as like, it seems like a relatively low hanging fruit. Effort that that could continue. It it just, it's a sort of a a straightforward thing that could further reduce some of the barriers to to residents. Rapidly being able to get the permits to install solar panels on on their homes. I I haven't yet heard a reason to not do it. Um, if there is a good reason to not do it, I'm totally open to that. I know that it Public Works is looking at that. But, um, is there an update on that? And if there's not, I'm happy to talk to you about that at a later date. Sure. Yeah, no, we we have not identified a reason not to do it yet. Uh, Public Works has spent a lot of time, um, working through how it would work and what it would look like. And now we are moved on to IT. So IT, our IT group is working with the solar app people on integration with our system. Because, uh, solar app will have to work with our e-track it permitting system. Um, and so that's where we are in the process right now is those two teams are coordinating on how that integration would happen. Okay. And so your your staff is in touch with Public Works to sort of coordinate on that that e-track it and that IT question? Yeah, yeah, right now it's living in IT. I haven't, for for a week or so, I haven't gotten an update on where those discussions are. I think our IT, like I said, is meeting with their IT, but I'll I'll follow up on that this week. Okay, great. I I my view is either let's do it or let's let's have a good reason that we're not doing it. Um, because it it strikes me as another area where we could, it's it's one more step that the city could be taking to to meet some of these very ambitious greenhouse gas emissions goals. Thank you again. I I know that I imagine that council can be slightly exhausting on this topic by constantly pushing for more. But it is coming, of course, from a place of the community really wanting to see more progress. And, you know, to the point that a number of counselors have brought up, you know, we we do have a lot more work to do as a region, as a state, on our air quality goals. And so getting meeting that really ambitious twenty thirty target, I think, is a is a really worthy goal and we should be doing everything possible to get there.
Counselor Labir.
Hey.
Counselor Ryan. Did you want to go first?
Go ahead and then I'll go.
I have Counselor Labir in my next window, um, but I'm happy to do Ryan instead. You guys pick.
Go ahead, Counselor Labir.
Uh, okay. Well, um, sorry about that. Um, yeah, I did want to point out, obviously, Excel, Excel has an ambitious plan. And they talked a little bit about it at CML, uh, this year, eighty percent zero emissions and by twenty thirty or something, I believe is the number. Um, but I did want to just point out a couple of things. One, these sort of building strategies, you know, that that Dr. Cog is really honed in on. I mean, a number of groups were sort of pushing back a little bit on the strategy because these are long term strategies. And we need some also, we need some short term gains and reductions, you know, obviously with raining in on building emissions. You know, that's that's a long, long term plan. And we need some immediate reductions in emissions, you know, uh, really sooner than later. And so on the sort of lower hanging side, um, you know, your non-road motors, your VMT improvements and that sort of thing. Is is where the city, I think, could also, um, play a major role. And I also just want to point out, obviously, there's been a going to be a seat change in the White House. Um, I actually had the opportunity to meet with Trump's, uh, President Trump's previous EPA Administrator last week. And it was a a really wonderful, interesting conversation. Um, but of course, as we can anticipate, what was in that conversation is that there's going to be increasingly less federal support. So it is going to become, you know, more on local and state governments to really lead in this area. And then the other thing I want to point out is the state implementation plan was basically rejected last year or and this year. Uh, by the EPA and the news publicly about how it was a plan that doesn't get us to attainment. Um, so it was really sort of a weak plan that doesn't do enough. And if you look at the SIP, it also really reckon or really promotes the idea that local governments are going to help out in in meeting the plan. So we're really part of the the strategy, um, whether we like it or not. And so and I'm not counting on the really the federal government. So, you know, really, we need to be looking at sort of what we can do. Individually, also regionally, but but what we can do at home. And I think there are strategies and I think, uh, Counselor Low made the point that I really wanted to make here. Um, which is, we need to, you know, we need the strategies that we need to be taking a look at and and acting on to come to us. And, uh, I think that's the the point Counselor Lou makes. I don't want to put words in his mouth. But, um, you know, we need to be looking at our licensing agreements with trash haulers and how we can be strengthening those licensing. Uh, to to get more, uh, mission reductions, uh, out of them. Uh, I think we should be looking at, you know, sort of all of the above strategy. We got Louisville, they went a hundred percent electric with their EV haulers. They got a zero mission city hall, uh, North Glen doing the same thing. They're planning on being a hundred percent, uh, carbon free in the next couple of years. Uh, with their municipal, uh, needs. Um, you know, we want to increase our recycling rate. So if we need to require that as part of our licensing, I think that's something, uh, we can be doing. And, uh, you know, what kind of, uh, resources does the city need? If you look at, uh, around, you know, Colorado, uh, Lewis Louisville or Laramie County, sorry. I was looking up standing up incentive programs. Uh, Denver has incentive programs, uh, to help their community members meet, uh, emission, uh, goals. Boulder has one. Uh, Boulder's is really fantastic. It's really considered sort of the model. Uh, it's called the Pace Program, if you look it up. Um, and they do a lot of great work, uh, as well. So I just say this all to say that, you know, I think we need to know where what we need to do to help you all meet those sixty percent reduction mission targets. And that, and, uh, you know, we just need your you to help us, uh, help you. So when I think about VMT, uh, reduction or vehicle miles traveled, you know, is the that's part of the reason I was bringing up the bike lane, uh, discussion. Because, you know, short of, uh, giving people money to electrify their cars, how else do we, you know, reduce emissions from vehicles? And by the way, half of the missions are a mixture of, uh, buildings and or vehicles. Eight, ten percent is like lawn and garden equipment, you know, should we be incentivizing some of that? Or, you know, these, you know, do we need to be putting more, uh, EV plugs, uh, around? Do we need a budget? Do we need a sustainability, uh, fund like, uh, Denver has for climate readiness? You know, there's all those kind of questions out there. Uh, so anyway, I don't really have anything in there other than, you know, and I already had this conversation with Director Parker, but I just wanted to bring it to all of you. Is, yeah, just hope that these conversations will continue to allow opportunities to talk about how we can play a role in helping you all, uh, meet these emissions. How we can play a role in helping you all uh, meet these emission targets and like hopefully exceeding them. You know, I want to be the the leader in this uh, in this fight uh, in the entire state. I want to go to. National conference and get an award for how Great Lakewood is and uh, we're leading the country and. Uh, you know, hitting uh, these fantastic emission targets. So anyway. Thanks.
Counsel Ryan.
And this is why we let Counsel Labir talk before. Now, I'm very grateful for some so many points that all the counselors have have made on this and. The 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 first thing that I had written down and hadn't scratched out, uh, despite uh, Counsel Low. And Labir just bringing this both up is to ask that question, what do you need from us? To be able to move this thing forward? And I'm I'm also very grateful for the hour plus presentation that you guys put together. But I'm still a little bit unclear about what the holistic plan is, right? I mean, it's and I I recognize it's easier said than. Done. It's it's almost like if there's a thread in this sweater that's starting to come, you keep pulling, you're pulling and it seems to touch everything. The next thing you do. It it's you've really captured everything, but. I I'd love to see more of a. What is the, what is the plan? Uh, that we want to attack? And I know it's. You 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 guys did a good job on 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 the uh. Presentation in providing a lot of information. But if someone asked me, what is the plan? I wouldn't be able to tell them what that plan is. So maybe I just need to listen to it again, but. Uh, I think that needs to be communicated a little bit better. For all of us. I also want to echo the point that I think. This horrible situation that we have with sustainability and environmental. Issues should be looked at as something that we should be seizing as the opportunity to be a leader. Um, as as Counsel Counsel Labir just mentioned. And and that that touches everything again. If we should be looking to trying to track businesses that will help us. Uh, tackle these problems and and be an inviting place for uh, consultants for. Light manufacturers, any number of these folks to come here in Lakewood to help us work on that, work on these problems. So I I think we should be looking at it again in terms of our plan and be looking at the the whole thing in which would include bringing in businesses on there. The. I also want to make sure that. The city is is taking the leadership position on what they can control. So it's a little bit harder for us to tell. Um, our residents how to act or not act. I I know that can be politically difficult, uh, but what's not difficult is for us to say. That we're going to have a lot of capital expenditures coming up in terms of our buildings, in terms of maintenance improvement and new construction. And uh, wasn't real clear uh, in the first round of comments as to whether. A lead certification would be too expensive for the city. I understand for our private businesses, it it may be if we required all of our private. Businesses to get lead certification for everything that's built. But is that something that the city could? Could endeavor to to take on? Sorry, that was a long ramble.
Um, yeah, and was the question in there? Yeah, the question was at the end.
Yeah, the last, yes.
So, yeah, we can certainly look at and and I think we should be pursuing lead on a certain buildings. The 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 main difficulty for the city is the range of buildings that we have. So for example, the next building that'll be built. By the community will be probably our new maintenance facility, which is a difficult building, which I I don't know that there's a lead category.
Which is a quick akin to the warehouse uh, category perhaps. So, I mean, there's. I I agree that the city is unique in terms of what buildings it may have, but it certainly has a significant footprint. Um, and there are different classifications that I think are pretty analogous. To almost everything that the city may have, City Hall being. Being more of the office building type of type of space. Um, and the warehouse for a lot of uh, of its other facilities, for example. Whether it's not lead certification, uh, Denver and other cities have a green code. Um, whether we want to adopt a green code, I think this is something I'd like. The city to be considering whether we want to adopt something like that, at least for how the city is going to behave. I'd also like to see that there's hard targets on doing more conversions. Uh, in terms of what our fleet and our our own lawn equipment, I know maybe perhaps that's not practical for everything. But there are a number of things that I think we can, as we replace and buy new. That we should consider um, making those transitions a little bit more. And then the last is. A number of folks have talked about uh, walkable cities, uh, and. One of the questions that was raised during the budget process was. Do we have enough money to tackle our top ten connection issues in terms of sidewalks? There's lots of places in the city that don't have sidewalks to even want to to walk. And the answer was no. So how do we reconcile trying to? Cut down our greenhouse emissions and and make our city more inviting and and lovable? When we have a a lack of connections? And how do we work our budget in for sustainability to tackle that with some of our other departments? I raise that more as a comment than a question. You don't have to answer that now.
I I just do, I going back a little bit to the, yeah, city facilities, I I do want to just say that we we do. Recognize the priority by the city council and by the community, um, and that the city needs to be a leader in these things. So. You know, when we do bring you new projects like this maintenance facility. They will be, you know, they will be sustainable, whether we achieve lead or bring you a package of how this is sustainable. Um, I know there's a sustainability consultant on that project, um, and. You know, we we hear the priority and we're gonna bring you projects that you can be proud of.
Yeah, and we we have large engineering companies, at least one large engineering company here in Lakewood that. I think could be useful and for us to help them grow. Their expertise to help us, I think would be good for Lakewood altogether and not trying to single out any particular one, but. I think, again, if we become the leader in tackling some of these issues and promote that. And also trying to uh, ask businesses and make it an inviting place for these types of businesses to come to Lakewood. I mean, this could be one of those win-win type things. All right, I'll stop my ramble.
Counselor Nice Room.
Okay, uh, just a couple of quick things I I forgot to bring up before, but uh, in just a reference. To your comments about warehouses, I mean, there. There are a significant number of lead certified warehouses. And the same thing with the Navigation Center. Like, at a minimum, we should be looking at efficient. Non-gas appliances as well as solar panels on the roof. Like, we have an opportunity here to. Really reduce the amount of consumption that we are. You know, it part of it every year as well as. You know, I know we pay into a solar farm, but we're still paying into that solar farm. So if we're able to make progress on a solar array and incorporating solar panels into. What we do for the city buildings, um. That will reduce our costs like without a doubt, and those are, that's money that we could reinvest in. Further initiatives, right? You know, I I've been through all the materials that are out there, presentations, the whole plan, like you name it, I've. I've dug through it, uh, and. You know, again, I appreciate all the efforts, but it's like we do have. Opportunities that we need to attack sooner rather than later. And and I guess from a. A budgetary perspective, one of the other things that I've been trying to promote to people and I've had people reach out to me from. All over the city about this, the Sustainable Neighborhood Program. Um, if you can take a look at what it is we need to do to make them an accessible program. Annually for every neighborhood. That wants to participate because this is a great way to get people engaged, to educate them on opportunities, to promote. You know, composting, um, help them understand better. What grants and and opportunities are out there, uh, or not grants, but tax credits and things like that. So again, we at the ground level, we can attack this neighborhood by neighborhood, right? But there's a lot of frustration because, you know, people can't get into the program. Um, and 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 so I think that is something that would be very helpful to to fully fund. So that we have the capacity to take on that on. And one thing I would add with respect to the solar app, and I know you know this, but. That that funding is first come, first served. So I think we need to like make a decision or, you know, you and I saw the app, right? It was a one pager. You know. On the outlying chance that you apply for the grant and you get the money and you don't think it's usable for the city, which I. I would have a hard time understanding. I would encourage you to go ahead and apply because we don't want to be in a situation where we run out of mon- ran out of money. And I I don't know if you were on the last. Email exchange with the product manager Ari, but she's. She's ready, willing and able to answer questions and um. You know, I I I think she would be the best person to go to um, directly. So.
Yeah, and and actually, we are, we are working directly with Ari and I think she's in contact with our IT team.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protime Sheri.
Yes, thank you. Um, a couple of things that I feel. Just keep coming up is, um, there's this. You know, obviously, I think um, Counsel Labir named this, like, we're always pushing for staff to go further on this and. And we're hearing from our community members. A desire for us to really double down on sustainability. And we keep referencing the budget, but. I do think that we are at an inflection point as a community, like. You know, when you, when we keep referencing places like Fort Collins in Denver who have a a funding source that is not. Telling staff to write grants to do these one-off projects. It's, I think, time for us to start to think thoughtfully about how we're going to be funding some of this stuff. If we want to be innovative, if we want to be award winning, we're not. Going to do it by cobbling together grants from the budget. So. I would encourage folks to really get educated on how some of these other eight, these other communities are. Who we keep referencing how they're getting their funding and let's talk about this at the workshop at the retreat. Because I do think that Lakewood's at a large enough city and a real desire um, from our community for us to. To really like implement some creative um. Revenue generating opportunities around this. It's heartbreaking to hear us keep telling staff to write grants, like, that's just not the path forward. And there's not the capacity, I think, for us to do that. And the other thing I would just highlight is, um, I've worked at a, an agency in the community that received a contract from the city of Lakewood to retrofit homes with energy and water saving measures. And the reality is there's just not workforce. So. We can say that we want to do this, but that we do have like this upstream impact where. Some of these more regional considerations and even what we're doing here at the city of Lakewood, like it has to be rooted in building out the workforce and we just don't have that. Expertise, like, we do need to think thoughtfully about partnership with other agencies who can start to do this implementation in the community. Who have the skills to do it, who have the training programs in place, but we do need to recognize that there is a dearth of. Folks that can implement some of these programs. So. I I just, like, I don't want to de- diminish like my desire and my value system and what I'm hearing from my community members, but I I do think that there is some upstream things that just have to be addressed. Before we can keep asking staff to like go further and do more. And so. I just implore my colleagues to be prepared to have that conversation when we meet um, for the planning retreat. In February. Thanks.
Counsel Sinks.
Thank you. I was glad to hear about the work on the tree canopy coming in twenty twenty five. I was also glad to hear that. It was put out there, oh no, the Emerald Ash Borer is in Lakewood. And uh, as part of the CSU Extension Program, the Master Gardener Program. Years ago, it was like, it's coming, it's coming, and and now it's here. And. My only option for my ash tree is to cut it down. The trunk is. Damaged, that and and so you can't do the um, the injects injections in the soil to bo- bolster it. Because, um, well, I could, it'd be like hundred fifty a year. So really, my point is that as the city has to mitigate the Emerald Ash Borer. And cut down trees that um, that the city. Do a really good job um, educating people that this is our only option because it's already out there that. Ah, we don't care. We just, Lakewood just cuts down trees and shrubs and and so, um. So that's the only point I wanted to make whenever we have to cut down the the ash trees that it. There's a lot of good education that goes along with that on here's why we have to do that. We don't want to break the budget, et cetera. And that and that we um, plant many, many, many trees are going to be planted to replace those old. The Emerald, they, the ash trees that the Emerald Ash Borer will surely destroy. So. We've done a good job, but let's be sure that we get out ahead of the public and. Don't again, let them think that, yeah, we don't care about trees, we're just cutting down these ash trees. So. Anyway, that's my encouragement. Thank you.
Counsel Cruz.
Thank you, and thanks to my colleagues and for a lot of great questions, um, and to staff for all of your diligent work on this. Um, just as the conversation went, I just had two clarifications or questions that came up. One, on the point about solar, um, just wanted to check my understanding based on the presentation. Um, about kind of what the city status is with solar on kind of our own production versus what we're buying into. Yeah, just wanted to check my understanding on that.
I am happy to address that one. Um, so as you mentioned, we have an offsite solar garden that we um, own panels through a committee solar garden. We also have a utility scale. Uh, renewable energy subscription through Excel Energy that provides one thousand one fifty, uh, one thousand fifteen kilowatts of solar energy for our facilities and. Right now, um. As you know, we are about to start with the Whitlock Solar Project, which will be our first onsite solar production project. Um, we are just finalizing the. Um, award and we plan on completing construction by the end of twenty twenty five and this. Um, solar system will be both rooftop and parking canopy structure that will enter uh, that will offset. Um, one hundred percent of our anticipated electricity use. So we are excited to have this first project. Get on the ground and hopefully take lessons learned so that we can move forward with other. Um, solar projects that we've already identified through the solar feasibility study that was completed a couple of years ago.
Great, that's super helpful. Um, and just to make sure I understand. Is that the solar garden, the first thing you mentioned that stopped the subscription? Are those our solar panels and kind of what does that look like? Like, what is the energy generation there?
Yeah, we, those are solar panels that we own. Um, and I believe it's around five hundred. Kilowatts of solar um. Panels and we allocate that energy that's produced towards some of our biggest um, energy users, which happen to be. Pumps for a lot of um, equipment.
Great, that's super helpful. Thank you for clarifying that for me. Um, and I got to learn more about Whitlock, which is in my district, so thank you. The final question I have related to the climate vulnerability study, um, I think it's. I I know that there's a lot for us to learn kind of as we go into the comprehensive plan process and and what's coming forth from there. I know that our unhoused neighbors, particularly on Colfax, but other folks around Colfax, I think. Are my my guess is um, have kind of uh, extra vulnerability. Both as we were talking about with the extreme cold, but also an extreme heat. And so. I'm kind of curious what the coordination between kind of the different divisions in this fabulous department um, might look like on thinking about next steps. On um, that that uh, study going into the plan.
Sure, I can go ahead and answer that. Um. So Chris Connor is one of the members of our internal working group that's been participating with us through. The vulnerability study, we have a great team of in- internal staff from different departments, including from within. The Sustainability and Community Development Department, as well as in Public Works and Community Resources. So we have a lot of feedback that we've been getting from other departments and divisions within the city to try to get a really complete picture of what all of the risks and vulnerabilities are that we're aware of in the city. We also have a community working group with some of the agencies and organizations that work out with some of those most vulnerable populations to help make sure that we're capturing their specific needs as best we can in that study.
All right. Well, gosh, there was a lot. I, thank you so much for so many of you on the team being here tonight. I will, you know, just personally will share that I have been a lifelong want-to-do-better-for-the-planet kind of person, but for, you know, the common person out there on the street, for us, it means how do we reduce, reuse, recycle? And switching over from the, how am I doing it for myself? To how are we all collectively working on better understanding what the options are and how we can functionally together move the dial for the city? Like, that's a big shift. I never expected to be in a policymaking stance as far as this and or a lot of other things go, but I will say that, you know, climate resiliency and sustainability is, I believe, one of the most complicated things. And having all of you here tonight, I know it was largely to be able to answer all the many questions that you very much got peppered with this evening. But I feel like it also helps you all understand how we as a group are kind of thinking and wanting to move that dial. We had a lot of great questions around, you know, I loved the, the questions that circled around like canopy, tree canopy health. That's fundamentally important. Yeah, we're talking about buying trees and getting trees out there, but it recently, in fact, I've got a question that might be coming to one of you guys in the next day or so that I just submitted to staff today around how we're supporting tree canopy health, most specifically around this ash borer thing. I found out of a program that Edgewater is doing and it, through their community resources. So Mr. Parker, it was really great to hear that you guys are working with community resources. So maybe there will be some conversations on improving that, but also like Counsel Labir mentioned, you know, there are some things that we can do that are less financial resources intensive. Where can we look at code shifts and things like that? Like he had mentioned the electronic vehicles in, you know, I know EVs are more expensive to purchase, but when we look at the return of investment of the vehicle through the lifespan of it, can very much actually be less expensive over the long term or how, you know, utilizing trash trucks that are electronics. So it was really great to hear all of that. And I do want to say, you know, while the on-ramp that we've been on with this particular topic is longer than what we talked about earlier tonight with extreme weather sheltering and addressing our unhoused needs within the community. You know, the momentum is building and, you know, in 2023, a huge shout out, we got the, we helped and got a great reward from Dr. Cog this year, but that was also on the heels of last year. I know you guys with all the work that you've done had gotten us onto the A-list for the carbon disclosure project. That is not a small feat. Four cities in the state of Colorado are there, less than 40 in the entire country. And the enhanced development menu that a council had the ability to be participating with and guiding, we got to be able to help move that dial too. So I'm really excited for the conversation and thank you, Council, for showing up with all your questions tonight as we're trying to pick through this all individually and trying to learn other ways that we can do more. And also, you know, within some of the financial constraints that are brought up here locally, but also with 2025 and years future, where federal funding is not going to be what it has been over the last few years. So I say that just with wanting to say thank you to everybody on this call tonight and those that are still listening that obviously are still you know, that are very passionate about this topic as well. I, we don't have any other questions tonight. So with that, I will release our staff. And again, thank you all for everything that you did in preparation for tonight. You know, we don't often get a one-hour presentation on Lakewood speaks in advance. So thank you very much for that and for all the work that you guys do and will continue to do to help us move the dial. Thank you for your patience as we're all trying to learn how to shift from, we want to do better as people to we want to help the city do better collective. So thank you very much. And we'll let you guys go. We have, for any of our committees, we've got committee reports that I would open up the floor to this evening. Does anybody want to give a committee report? Mayor Protam Charazai and then Counselor Mayor Guerrero.
Yes, thank you. Just a quick plug, the screening committee is going to be meeting on December 3rd. And would, aside, you all help to promote the vacancies that we have in the Board of Appeals, Knoxes, Weed and Lakewood Advisory Commission. This will be our last screening committee meeting for a while. We usually take a little bit to get going in 2025 in the first quarter. So it'd be great to have all effort to just get a push out and have people apply for those openings. And that's it.
Counselor Matt Guerrero.
Yes, the next Housing Policy Commission meeting is on December 12th at 6:00 PM. It is hybrid. But the room that we meet in is apparently sometimes a little bit difficult to hear online. So recommend for community folks that are interested in giving any comment or getting really in the weeds of listening to that discussion, to come in person. We are going to be talking about our approach, our potential approach for inclusionary zoning at that meeting.
Counselor Sinks.
Tomorrow night, we have, tomorrow at 5:30, we have a Head Start Committee Meeting. That's Counselor Matt Guerrero and Counselor Nystrom. And so the director always does a really good job pulling together the reports. And so that's our report, that's our meeting for tomorrow. Thanks.
Counselor Mayor Guerrero, did you have another one?
Okay. So I will push or do a quick plug for everybody. If you've not seen it yet, in your email, I sent out a web form survey today to give everybody the opportunity to try to let me know which communities or which committees you're interested in. I know that not all of them are ones that light our souls up to be serving on. And so this year, what I wanted to try to do was to at least give everybody the opportunity to have a couple of them. There are some that are required by law, different things, different places that we do need to have attendance with. So it's, we won't all get to do everything that sings our soul, but I do definitely want to make sure that everybody gets the chance to be on at least a couple that they find to be passion points. So complete that survey when you can and we will be working through that. That'll be my work throughout the month of December. So do let me know if you've got any questions on that. There was one other thing I was going to mention there. Oh, because we don't have to do same committees every single year. Some of you may want to, but we will shift it around a little. There may be some repeats this year, but this will give us the opportunity, me the opportunity to know what you're interested in. And that does play a role in whether you're on a committee two years in a row, or if we stir the pot and maybe change it up a little bit. So thank you, everybody, for that. And do let me know if you've got any questions. And that is it for tonight. So with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn us. No further business this evening. So we will go ahead and adjourn the study session at 9:42 PM. Thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight.